Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting the Pintop Lakeside Town Council's order. I would ask that you make sure your cellphones are on silent or vibrate. We do have a quorum. Welcome back to everybody. I would ask that you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation.
The religion's stupid flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Mayor.
Our Father in Heaven, as we come before thee this evening in this Pintop Lakeside Council meeting, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to live in this beautiful community. We are grateful for the moisture that thou has sent to our lands and pray that thou would continue to bless us with more moisture to reinvigorate our forests and lands and protect us from fire danger. We're grateful for those who serve our community as first responders and pray that thou would watch over and bless them. Also, we are grateful for our dedicated employees who serve us here in this community. We pray that thou would bless them and bless their families. Now, as we come together this evening to consider many issues, some difficult issues to consider, we pray for discernment and for the ability to do what is in the best interest of this community for the future. And we ask these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Item B on our agenda tonight is Call to the Public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in Call to the Public is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard during Call to the Public and individuals are limited to three minutes. We have one request for Call to the Public. Kenny Cale?
Thank you, Mayor Irwin, council members, and town employees. If we review the town survey that was made in 2022, the survey included a direction of voting for five items, so you had your choice. We would see that the highest interest area was the community center at 39%. There was also a community garden that was at 35% and a senior center, which is the community center, at 15%. If we combine this, that's 89%. I ask how the town council is promoting this desire from the local community. The next area of interest were a splash pad at 37% and more youth programs at 35%. Combined, that would represent 72% of the desires of the community. I requested utilized, I personally requested to utilize a time slot aside from the now defunct Blue Ridge High School pickleball team, and I suggested opening this time slot for youth play and with two other former assistant coaches who were volunteering at the time. We were denied. Dog park, you know what? That's my favorite. It's a 35%. Since this survey, the council's cracked down on the irresponsible dog owners, and I agree with them. I have been requesting that a committee be formed and would be volunteered, I would volunteer to be the chair of that committee if you need to. I believe we need to get all voices. People who hate dog parks need to be on this. Pickleball, 27%. I'm happy to see your support for adult pickleball. I want to emphasize how your backing of a project of interest in the community gives a substantive weight to the commitment that outside funding sources would like to see. I'd like to see that for the dog park, too. We have tracks, Saber Park, Tree City, Dark Sky International, and the Nature Center. They're all central to what we need, which is a nature-centered tourism in this area. The bike park, that was 26%. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Once again, I admire your passion for our community. Item C on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be acted on by one motion of the council. There'll be no separate discussion unless an item or items, a member of town council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda, and items removed are considered in their normal sequence as listed unless called out of sequence. We have six items on our consent agenda tonight. Councilor Heisler would like items?
I would request items C4 and C5 be removed from the consent agenda for discussion.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Make a motion to remove items C4 and C5 from the consent agenda for discussion.
Thank you. I'll second that. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. At this time, then, we will take a motion to approve C1, 2, 3, and 6 unless there are questions from the council.
I've got.
Councilor Turner?
Thank you. Which were the two items that?
C4 and C5, the check registers.
Okay. Because there were some, there were some issues with the minutes from?
Minutes, yes. Thank you for bringing that up. There were some minor technical corrections, and those have been adjusted. I believe it was a matter of who was present at a meeting and who appeared telephonically. So those have been corrected. Thank you, Councilor Turner, for reminding me of that. Okay. Then we'll vote on C1, 2, 3, and 6.
I'll make a point.
Vice Mayor?
I move to approve C1, 2, 3, and 6 of the consent agenda.
I second that.
Thank you. It's been moved in second at all. Those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Councilor Heisler, would you like to ask your questions?
Yes, and I just wanted to start off by saying I had several discussions in the community lately with folks that are asking about kind of what the process is as we go through as council members on the, on the check registers and approving the financials that our employees spend money on. And so I just kind of wanted to go through that process and then ask some of these questions in public so that the answers can be given to you, to be very honest. I actually came in on Tuesday, right after the holiday. I turned this over to town staff. I told them exactly that, what questions I had. Those questions, a lot of them for me have already been answered, but I did want to go through this and kind of do this in a public forum because we don't normally do that. In hindsight, I might have chose a meeting with a little less stringent agenda, but it is what it is, so bear with me. The first question I have is, starting with the check register from June, was Aldridge Consulting, and I noticed we paid $3,230 to them. When this was presented to council, we were always told that we were, the money that we paid them was directly linked to the money that they brought into the town. And so I didn't see anything that said, hey, we brought any money into the town. I just saw that we were paying them money, so I had a question.
Yes, thank you, Councilor Heisler. I think originally when we had the contract with Aldridge Consulting, it was on a percentage of the amount of money they brought in. However, the last contract I pulled was a dollar amount. When we, you know, let her know that there was an intent to maybe dismantle that agreement, she dropped her percentage, and then ultimately we have stopped that contract altogether. So that was the last month that you see in July will be the last month that was paid.
Okay, thank you. The next one I had was Aspen contract. Looks like we paid them $958.33 in the month of June for water, soda, snacks, and I think it's town hall water.
Yes, thank you, Councilor Heisler. I spoke with Public Works Director Patterson on this. They do buy bottles of water for all town buildings except for the police department. Theirs is delivered through the pour station. Those are water bottles that they use on the Aspen contract. They also had soda and snacks, which they use in their vending machine, and then that money will be reimbursed as they empty the machine out. So we've, I've talked to Stacy, and we've gotten some checks here and there, and Matt figured out the dollar amount, and it should come out even.
So it's money in, money out?
Exactly.
The next item I had was a Jamie Betty for monthly social media, and my question on this was, we have an in-house person that does social media for the town.
Yes. Annie works on several websites. The, this, the accounts that Jamie Betty works on, and she does a lot of photography for us, photography for us, is an account that she monitors and just follows that herself. And I have the receipt. Honestly, I don't, it's in my stack of papers, but I can get that for you. But it is a different social media account than the ones that Annie follows here.
Okay. Thank you. And then DLT Solutions, it looks like we paid $6,838.10, split into three different budget line items.
I might have to ask Matt for his help on this one. This is one I didn't get to talk to you about, Matt, but it says it's AEC and Civil 3D Annual Subscriptions. Can you explain that one? I'm sorry.
It's my AutoCAD. So AutoCAD, the software.
Okay. Is it three separate subscriptions for three separate?
No, the way that it splits on there, it splits it, and then you have to put the amount in it, and sometimes it shows the, it like doubles it up. So it's very expensive. AutoCAD's very expensive. It's my seat and Catherine's seat.
So basically, it looks like it's in three departments is why it's?
Yeah, it's split in three different funds.
By three departments.
The total of that is $6,838.10, and it's divided between facilities, streets, and parks at $22.79.36 for one account, and then $22.79.37, it's an extra cent, between streets and parks.
And every one of those facilities, streets, and parks would utilize this software?
Yeah. The AutoCAD, I use it to build the path that we had. I used it to build the Veteran Memorial out here. PD, we used it to build the civil work on that. So yeah, we use it quite a bit in all the different facilities.
Thank you. The next question, the next one I had was labor systems. It looks like over the month of June, we spent almost $10,000 in temporary help, and all of that was also split up between several different accounts.
I may ask for Matt's help on this one, too, but just to, just to correct some of that, Councilor Heisler, is some of that was from May. So if you look at the dates on there, well, it does say 6:01 to 6:30, but the, half of that was from May, turned in in June, and then the other part was June.
Okay.
And then they were split between facilities and then streets. And under facilities, it's under seasonal employees, and then street maintenance is under cinders, small tools, aggregate, chip sill, pavement, crack seal, concrete. And if you have any other questions, I would defer to Matt on that.
Well, whoever, I guess my, my next question would be, as I go back through the budget and I look at, let's say, 216031 or 106217, there's no employee labor in those budget line items. So how are we?
Yeah, good question. We typically have done it every year. It's just a thing that we do. We, we have temporary help all summer long. It's been cheaper than hiring more people. However, we've discussed in the years past moving to some sort of program where we could work with the high schools on that, yet our policies need to be adjusted for a part-time that can't, that doesn't receive benefits. And so that was one of the things that Kevin and I were working on prior, but we haven't never finished that up. I would like to get to that point where we hire, you know, some younger kids and bring them in, but right now, that's the best result we have. Typically, it was under streets. So typically, what happens is, we do, we do our credit cards, we do our check requests, the finance does the reports, and we get back the final, and then we go through every line item. And let's be honest, we make mistakes. There's a lot of moving parts, right? So we go back and we clean those up, and we give them journal entries and corrections. So I think on this one, it probably should have been in street maintenance, not in small tools, obviously. However, that's where it got coded. So we haven't got to that point of cleaning up. We just got June financials cleaned up, what, this last week? So we're right in the process of going through those and making sure all those accounts are perfect. And that's how we check and balance those. So that would be my answer to why it's coded wrong, but this is something we've been doing for a long time that we really, we need the help. We always need the help. And so it's split between different, different groups, so.
Okay. And is, so does this help you get for special projects, or is this something that you use them every month for?
Oh, we use them every month. We use them in the parks. We use them in the, the fleet. The fleet always picks up this time of year. We, we increase so much in our town this time of year, and all of our work has to be done in a short period of time, right? You guys know that. We've talked about it a lot. So we need that extra help this time of year to just make sure that we can get everything done. And what falls short is cleaning vehicles, you know, weeding. Those things fall short because all of our, our talented employees are doing what they're supposed to be doing, so that's what we backfill with.
And I guess, just a follow-up question for that, like, is there any chance that because we just kind of divide these employees regardless of what they're being hired for between different accounts, that we're using special funds for things they shouldn't be getting used for?
No.
You guys?
No, they're getting pretty good, and yeah. I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
Councilor Heisler, the only thing I'd add is, we have started working with Director Patterson as well on analyzing our cost allocation model, especially when we talk about restricted funds, and we're working with him on making sure we, we all have sound practice as it comes to cost allocation.
Thank you. The next one I had was O'Reilly Auto Parts. And I guess my biggest, for those members of the public that would look at this, it just says parts. It says shop supplies. And I'll let Christie touch on the receipts in the background and what we don't see on this report that?
Thank you, Councilor Heisler. So yeah, so the space that we have to put a description is very limited. And what we've always been told is to stick, to keep your description limited, otherwise it goes off the page and you don't see it. So in these particular items, there, there was, I think I let you come in early and look at it today, and I want to say there was like 15 pages of parts for PD vehicles, all the vehicles in town basically that are serviced. So what you're seeing here is just a very, very small detailed section, but all of the parts are accounted for, all the prices were accounted for on there, they're coded to the right places on there. I would just, if anyone has any questions, if they see something on here that's vague, is just reach out to us. We can get a receipt. Anyone's welcome to come in and review at any time they would like.
And I would add, if you don't mind, Christie, is that we use O'Reilly's because they're on the One GPA, which allows us to use them and go under a national purchasing permit.
Can I answer this? I want to answer the second question you had to that as well, Tabor, or Councilor Heisler, I'm sorry. Unless it's going to come up later, but you asked how we monitor those tools. I talked to Director Patterson, and the large tools are tagged and put into inventory. Small tools aren't tagged and put into inventory, but he did say that they do have two sets of eyes on it. Melina checks them in when they come in, and they said they've never had a problem with small two tools going missing.
Thank you. The next item I had was a petty cash withdrawal for pilot meal per DM.
Yeah, thank you. So I spoke with Tony Alba. He's the Director of Community Services. This was for pilot meals for the summer nights event. It came out to $20 per day for two days, so it was $40 a person. That was for, I think, I believe it was 10 people, but it was pilots, the balloon meister, the balloon DJ, the announcer, and that's it. The rest of them are all balloon pilots. And I have a list of who they were allocated to.
And I guess the question that I have on that is, what, what is best practice? Because I don't, I guess I understand the need for the town to pull out cash, maybe to provide change for people when they buy something at town hall here or fees for PD, but I don't, is it best practice for employees to go pull cash out of the bank and then?
Thank you. Yeah, Councilor Heisler, no, it's not. And that's something that we're going to follow closely, and I think what we would do going forward, even though that event has been canceled at this time, is to issue a per DM check for a situation like that.
Thank you. The next item I had, I think we move on to the P cards?
Yes.
The first ones we came across were monthly, the monthly subscription for beenverified.com.
Okay, beenverified.com is used by our code enforcement officer. It was originally in the name of Rick Buffington, who was our officer at the time. When he would go to the Navajo County Assessor site to find somebody who, that he needed to talk to about a code violation with, whether it be weeds, trash, whatever it was, the only way he could really get a number to contact them was through Been Verified. There's no phone numbers listed on the assessor site, and a lot of those addresses are to a trust, so there was really no way to get ahold of him. That is currently being moved over to Rudy Truheel, who is our new code enforcement officer.
Thank you. And then $264.11 to Alberto's Mexican Food. It says accidentally used town P card for personal purchase. Has that been re?
That's been refunded. I have a copy of the check here, and it's cleared.
Then we go down to propane purchases. And I think originally, I think I'm starting to understand, just for everybody, that there were three propane purchases is what it looked like to me, but I think that's actually one propane purchase split into three separate accounts.
That's correct. I have the receipt. It's for one tank. It is, it was divided up between facilities, parks, and streets under staff development for Pub Works, and I believe that was to fill their propane tanks for a barbecue.
Okay. I had a couple other items on this list. They were all tools. We kind of addressed the small tools and equipment, so I'll skip over those. We had, I think the next one is a general description of break room supplies, several expenses, break room supplies, office supplies for break room.
Yes, Councilor Heisler, I, we went through the receipts, and it does appear that all of the items purchased were break room supplies, and I think the issue that we're running into there is it's, it's a lot of items that they can't list every single item on there. And with the PD, I know a lot of those items, like the colander, a spatula, a lot of that's a one-time purchase that, that they used in their, in the new PD facility in their, in their, they didn't have a True Kitchen at the old PD facility, so they purchased some items.
Thank you. And I think the next one was printer ink.
Yeah, that printer ink was not purchased by Stacy MacArthur under the general office supplies because it's a specialty ink that, it does a hot ink transfer, and it was used to do the pilot gift bags that they do. It's a one-time purchase. I had eyes on it. I've seen the printer, and it's a legitimate charge.
And I think for everybody, my question was generally like, just says printer ink, so how do we know that this is for a town printer, et cetera? And they had good tracking mechanism for that.
Yeah.
Skip some of the, the break room supplies again as we move on to the next page.
Same thing, Councilor Heisler. Those were also for the, the police department. Some of those are, am I on the wrong page? I think I am.
I think so, yeah.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Can you tell us a little?
I have a bunch of receipts here, sorry.
Yeah, I'm on, well, when I get to P cards, it's hard because they're not numbered, so I apologize.
A date or a?
516.
Years?
Years.
And I'm, I am sorry, I did not have the receipt for this purchase. It was three purchases at $3.25. It was basically a purchase that was broken down into three, and it would have equaled $9.75. And I'm guessing it was coffee or creamer. That's a guess. I'll find the receipt. I do not have that receipt here.
And I think what initially drew my attention was the three different charges, and then it took me a minute to decipher that it was actually being charged, one charge to three different accounts within the town. I think the next one down there, from there, was 527 for car washes.
Yeah, that, that as well, that, that is one car wash broken down into four departments because it's a $12 car wash. They broke it down to $3 for four different accounts. That's in the Public Works Department.
And this, and this will happen several more times as we move through the budget, but I, for the interest of time, I just wanted, like, this is very confusing when you're looking at this and you see a $12 car wash broken up into four different town accounts. And for, for somebody like me to continue to follow that all the way through and understand why we do that. The next one down was supplies. It was 526. It just says supplies.
That was for the library. Some of those were craft supplies for, or they were craft supplies. There was a book with large print ordered, and then there was the laminating paper that does only fit on our big town laminator. That's what those were.
All right. And then on the next page, 515 for staff luncheon, again, broken into, I think this one's actually five different accounts. Looks like one purchase.
That's correct. I spoke with Director Patterson about that, and this was the staff lunch for the entire Public Works Department, so it was broken down into all five departments that they have over there.
Down a little bit farther, there's safety boots, and I think my, my question is, the safety boots continue to show up time and time again, and they're very expensive purchases. And I guess what, what's the?
So I can answer that. So yes, employees are afforded an allowance for boots. Well, they were afforded an allowance for boots. I don't know when it changed. And then I did, I did some research today through AMR RP and both OSHA, and the town, because we require a still toe boot or a composite toe boot, we do have to allow a purchase of that, though the town can set a limit on that. There was, I think, some misunderstanding that we have to pay for the whole thing no matter what, but when I reached out to OSHA and AMR RP, that is only for a specialty if they have to have like, like dividers between the toes or a fire. There was one that was an electrical, if you work in a meat plant and what, so they're very, very specialized shoes that we then cannot set a limit on it. We have to pay for it 100%.
So is this something that we can look at?
This is something that we can?
Uniform allowance, or?
So Councilman Heisler, Mr. Miller and I actually discussed this kind of in particular. It's one of the things I've noticed as I was looking through, and we see very common is uniform allowances, and, and right now, it seems the policy just allows staff to just go kind of purchase these things. I think as we're trying to look at overall control of the budget going forward, we are going to propose some type of uniform allowance that allows people that do need special clothing, special equipment to have a means to acquire that, but just a little bit more controls on that and not just something with a P card going out and buying, so.
And Councilor Heisler, this particular one looks like they returned a pair and bought a pair because one of them is in credit. So it wasn't like two charges. I hope you noticed that.
I did, yeah. $290.39 returned and $369.59 spent. 524 and 526 coded kind of similarly, 445, 10, and 9408. This is for uniform and monitor. And then on the next line, uniform?
I apologize, Councilor Heisler. I was unable to get ahold of Mr. Van Patton today to ask what those were. He's out sick, but I will get an answer for you on that.
Okay. And then the last one we had on this, on June, was three charges for Blue Beam software.
And those are also under Mr. Van Patton, but I do believe they're coded to Public Works. Matt, do you want to talk on Blue Beam?
I think you can use it, too. You got one spot. We paid for it. I think you can use it too. You got one spot. We paid for it. I think me and Jeremiah, my team and Jeremiah is the only ones that use it. It's, it's like Adobe, but for plans. So it's the way that we communicate with plans back and forth between contractors. And even when we do corrections in-house, we'll use it to correct on that. So that's what we use it for.
Thank you. Want me to move on to C5?
As long as you're happy with C4, then we can do both of them with one motion, I believe.
Are you done with, are we done with the questions?
That's all on C4.
Oh, okay, sure.
Yeah, so go ahead, go ahead, Councilor Heizer, please.
So in the interest of time, there were some similar, there were some duplicates on here. I'm not going to bring them up twice. I think the first one there was Art Dura. That was on a duplicate for consulting.
Yeah, Art Dura is something that we, it's a, it's a engineering consulting firm. And they, they do have it listed that they consulted on a job. I don't know, it's coded as a job number, and I don't know the job numbers. But Art Dura does some consulting on engineering for us. We have a contract with them.
Thank you.
They recently assisted us with a legal description on a potential future annexation as well.
Okay. The next one I have on here that's not a duplicate would be mileage reimbursement. 626 for 268.80.
I have that. Yeah, this was a mileage reimbursement for a staff member that was attending some training in Phoenix. I spoke with Public Works Director Patterson and explained that if a town car is available per our policy, they need to take a town car. That way, we're not paying extra mileage. If a town car is not available, staff can take their personal car and charge us mileage. But if they choose to take their car, even if there's a town car available, we don't pay mileage. And that is in our town policy.
And so was this employee offered a town vehicle?
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay. And then down, we had two charges to Gabe Garcia totaling $1942.40.
I have an invoice here. Let me get it. This was an invoice for Budget and Financial Analytical Review to Gabe Garcia. It was broken down as $800 for the analytical review, and then $221.20 in mileage. And this was a direction of interim Town Manager Miller.
That's correct. I, you know, brought on Gabe Garcia on a very short-term basis to evaluate where we were with our budget situation. With his experience in municipal finance, I felt very comfortable bringing him on board to evaluate where the town was. I think even last night, he, on his own dime, came in and talked to the People's Voice Committee just about budgets in general. So he is very valuable to us for a short term. We're not using him currently, anyway. We're done with that.
Thank you. I was, I mean, I was aware of that. So I'm not, it just, it was on there, and I wanted to bring it up. So the next one I have is landscaping services for $14.90 in the month of July. I didn't bring this up in the month of June, because that was the old budget year, but we're in the new budget year, and I believe that their direction from council was to remove that from the budget moving into this fiscal year. And it's still on, we're still paying them in the month of July.
My bring, you know, I think we did that when the budget was adopted or approved. That was included. Matt, maybe you can explain some of the work that they're doing outside of the parks areas that are more under the, I think, under economic development.
It's Magic has been doing a great job for the town for many years. And the issue was is that we were cutting general fund. And so we tended to cut the whole thing, and then we came back and said, well, let's, let's not do that. Let's cut just what general fund has out of it. So we cut all of general fund, and then that's what came back to you. I know it got kind of confused there at the end, but I thought that we went over it pretty well at the budget meeting. So I don't know if we missed it, or we, I know we talked about it at the budget meeting, but.
I remember in the budget meeting, as we said, we were doing away with all those contracts with It's Magic.
I can pull, I can pull the, I can pull the minutes from that budget work session. Originally, council had directed staff to take it off of it. And then when it came back to the next meeting, they, they put half of it back on. And it's, it's been put in there as $40,000 for landscape under professional services. But do you want to just have Matt, probably check on the code on this? There's one of these charges to It's Magic Landscape that's coded to streets. That needs to be changed.
Yeah, the majority of this is streets.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. There's quite a bit of landscaping in the streets right of ways, all through the 260 corridor that we maintained, the roundabout at the school, the jail cell. The park is separate, which is Jack Barker Park, but that's what they're maintaining. And currently, we're, we're strapped. We don't have enough resources to maintain all of that. So we need to find a place where we can take it, or we'll have to be looking at more people to come on and help us accomplish these tasks. So in my mind, the $40,000 to continue those big pieces was the better move than trying to, try to push for another hire, which I don't think that that's on the table at this point.
Well, I don't know if we can go back to, I remember having, I personally remember having a discussion about this coming out of special funds, but I still remember the direction from council in that budget work session was to, was to cut those contracts and, and use that money for other things in the town. So I don't know. I just thought I'd bring it up because I saw the charge on here.
Yeah. No, I was under the full, full impression that we were leaving the special stuff in there. So after our last budget meeting, I apologize if I misread what the room was trying to push for there, so.
Thanks, Matt. And moving forward, in the interest of time, moving all the way to the last page, 10, another mileage reimbursement. And I'll be honest, I guess I don't understand mileage reimbursement, knowing that this particular staff member has a take-home vehicle. So I was wondering if, what, what the mileage reimbursement was for.
Stacy, can you help me with this one? Because you might have to go to the, I'm sorry. I'm not sure that I understand that one correctly.
So before, when I started in '22, our IT technician was granted mileage per day. And he was granted it twice a year. Beginning of May of this year, he was given a town car to take home back and forth that stop. So that, the entry there is for his last mileage for the beginning of '25.
So from January 1 to when he received the town vehicle in May?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now we're going to the P cards again, for the month of July?
Oh, oh my gosh, I'm sorry. I think I set him down. Okay. I should probably know him off the top of my head. Okay, go ahead.
I guess we can kind of, we've talked about some of this stuff already. So we had several more expenses for food, luncheons, trainings, break room supplies, pass, all that stuff. Another purchase for boots. And then we get down to, I guess we had a luncheon here, 239.41.
Can you tell me the date?
626.
Okay. I apologize. I thought we were done, and I set everything down.
Entry says training lunch.
Can you tell me the amount again?
239.41 to Charlie Clark's Steakhouse.
Yeah, sorry. If you can just let me know what they are, I think I can answer them. Here it is. So this was, Public Works had a training lunch, I believe during some concrete training at Charlie Clark's.
And is, and do we have a limit, a per diem, a policy, or anything that kind of regulates?
No, I'm sorry, we don't.
Do we know how many people that was for?
I do not.
This, this caught my attention as well, Councilman Heizer. I immediately, upon seeing this lunch charge on the P card, for, I think they were having a concrete training of some sort, directed staff not to charge purchase card, use a purchase card for these types of luncheons moving forward. We just don't want that to happen. So I don't know that it's in a policy, but my policy is we don't want to have people paying that kind of money at a, for a lunch training. I would rather have them find another mechanism to, to find a way to get food, whether they bring in sack lunches or whatever. Just don't need to be paying that kind of money at Charlie Clark's for a training. Even though Charlie Clark's is really excellent. It's a great, great place to eat. I love it.
As do I, sir. I guess going down that, a little bit farther, there's several other food charges, but Speechify for $139.
Yes, I spoke with Director Patterson on this one. He did say that staff is out in the field quite a bit, and doesn't always have time to, you know, read and respond to emails right away. Speechify is, I hope I'm correct on this, is a program that will take an email and read it to you.
Okay.
Is that right? Is that right? Okay.
The next one is Midway Sports for $500 in uniforms?
Yeah, the Midway Sports, $500 in uniforms. I have a receipt. It's 10 Nike Dry Fit shirts at $50 each. It's broken down into four, five, four or five different departments. I'm not sure who they were for. They weren't listed. But that was in the Public Works Department. And it looks like it went to pretty much almost every department over there.
This is also an issue that Gabe and I have both talked about, in terms of the uniform policies moving forward, trying to figure out how we're going to minimize, how, if someone wants a nicer shirt, a very nice, higher-priced shirt, they can pay for it out of their own pocket. Maybe we can provide a, allow us up to a certain amount for a...
Don't we pay about $5,000 a month already for uniforms for Public Works?
I don't know what the total amount is, but.
I want to say it was $5,300 or something. I looked on the, for a monthly uniform service.
Yeah, I think that's.
Is that for the cleaning?
That's the cleaning.
Is that the cleaning?
Cleaning?
And the rugs for all of the facilities. They, if you'll notice, the ones that are logoed outside are, when you walk in here, those are all of them.
So it just, it just says uniforms, but it's uniforms, rugs, probably.
There's a uniform allowance every department. I, it probably depends on how many staff members are in that department, and I don't know those numbers off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
We need to, again, we need to implement a policy on uniforms and how they're going to be, how we're going to spend money for those.
Yeah, I think it also, you know, I mentioned the allocation. I think some of the other stuff too, is just use of GL codes. You know, some of our account codes, there, there's some mixture of what one department within the town may think goes under an expense code, and another department thinks something different. Try to get more uniform account codes. So if you see uniform expense, it truly is uniform expense and not, you know, what I would call janitorial services, which would be cleaning our rugs at Town Hall and other buildings, so.
Three charges to Nav Apache Electric Co-op on a P card?
Yeah. I'm not sure why this is done this way. Stacy is going to look into seeing if we can get invoiced and write a check, so that shows a start, showed up in the check register. That is the way it's been done. Am I correct, Stacy, since you've started here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was moved to the P cards because there's so many of them, and they come in at different times. So it got extremely confusing on all the different NEC electric bills. So we moved them all to one P card, and then that way they could all be put on automatic payments is the only reason we went to a P card. The only way to do the automatic payment was through the credit card. That's why we did it.
Thank you. Walmart for a phone case for a new iPhone.
Hey, I spoke with Director Patterson about this. He did say that the town has been supplying phone cases for, phone cases for employees that work out in the field in Public Works to protect their phones.
Okay. Next one was Apple Store, $1,292.52 for a phone supplies, is what it says.
You want to take this?
I, you know, that one, I mean, especially caught my attention. Apparently, Public Works and the Police Department work on the same kind of phone service. I can't remember the name, Matt.
Of course, Net.
And, and an employee was having difficulty with a phone that he brought to the position, was his own personal phone, was having difficulty with it, inquired about, you know, how to get this phone replaced. Apparently, the company that they, that provides service to Public Works and Police, so they couldn't replace that like phone for a like phone. I think there was some questions brought up. He needed a phone. This phone is extremely expensive. And the last direction I think I gave IT was to check with that company and see if they could reimburse the town for that phone, or have the employee reimburse the town for the phone if they choose to keep it as their personal phone. That's kind of where it is right now. But we don't want to go out making purchases like that for phones that are that expensive. There's, there's a cheaper way to do it. And we had a lot of conversation about that internally, about not letting that kind of a phone purchase happen in the future.
And then just below that, for $139, that's part of the same purchase?
It was a warranty for the phone, yes?
And then I think we went on to the back page, and we kind of talked about a lot of different IT supplies that are being purchased?
Yeah, and I, and I noticed those have some vague descriptions as well. This is the same thing. But the P cards especially has a very small amount of room. And again, this employee was out sick today, so I am sorry I do not have an answer for you on those, but I will get them for you.
But same tracking mechanism, accountability, obviously, in his department, he's keeping track of those items. And then another boot expense, and the reason I highlighted this one is because I know this person isn't here.
Right. We don't have any policy that if an employee buys a boot and then leaves in a certain amount of time, that they owe the town any money back. We have no policy like that. So yeah, unfortunately, the boot was purchased. I don't know what the last day of employment was, but he's no longer with the town.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for bearing with me. Sorry about that.
Thank you for your diligence, Councilor Heizer. Would you like to make a motion to approve this now?
I will make a motion to approve items C4 and C5 from the consent agenda. I'll second that.
Thank you. Your motion seconds for further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for all your diligence on that as well, Kristi. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken in each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 on our agenda tonight is the Town of Pinetop Lakeside proclamation of the 94th Annual Navajo County Fair and Rodeo, which will be September 10 through the 13th, 2025. Whereas, the Navajo County Fair is celebrating its 94th consecutive year, standing as one of the longest-running and most cherished traditions in our region. And whereas, since its humble beginnings in the 1930s, the Navajo County Fair and Rodeo has been a place where residents and visitors alike gather to share in the spirit of community, friendly competition, and cultural pride. And whereas generations of Navajo County families have participated in this annual tradition by showcasing garden and homemade products, artistic creations, livestock, horsemanship, and a variety of hobbies and skills. And whereas, the fair and rodeo have served as an enduring symbol of our shared heritage, offering wholesome, educational, and entertaining experiences for people of all ages. And whereas, the Pinetop Lakeside Town Council and the Town of Pinetop Lakeside deeply value the cultural, social, and economic contributions this event brings to our community and to all of Navajo County. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside, do hereby proclaim September 10 through the 13th, 2025, as Navajo County Fair and Rodeo Days in the Town of Pinetop Lakeside. On this 94th anniversary, we honor the dedication of past and present volunteers, participants, and organizers whose vision and commitment have sustained this treasured tradition for nearly a century. I further encourage all residents of Pinetop Lakeside and town staff to join in the celebration, to support our neighbors and friends in their endeavors, and to take pride in this remarkable milestone in our county's history. In witness where I have heron do set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside. the Town of Pinetop Lakeside, Arizona, done at Town Hall this fourth day of September, 2025. And at this time, I'd like to invite Mina Henning to come up and tell us a little bit more about the fair.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mina Henning, I'm with the Navajo County Fair and Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for doing this. We greatly appreciate, you know, all efforts throughout Navajo County to, you know, encourage people to come to the fair and to support, because a lot of the 4-H and FFA and junior livestock kids, there are a lot of them that do live in the Pinetop Lakeside area. Plus, there's a lot of residents that enter their items into the fair. So we greatly appreciate you guys helping us spread the word and encouraging, you know, the residents to go to the county fair. So thank you very much.
So, Mina, what are the hours next week?
The fair is September 10th through the 13th. On Wednesday, the fair opens at 4:00, and they have opening ceremonies and closes at 11:00. And then Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, the fair opens at 10:00, closes at midnight. Thursday is demolition derby. Friday and Saturday, well, Friday is junior livestock auction, which, where a lot of those kids, you know, sell their project animals that they've worked on all year long, and that money goes back to those kids on their project animals. That's when, Friday, they have that, they have the rodeo on Friday. And then Saturday, they have the Little Buckaroo rodeo, and then again with the rodeo Saturday night. And then there's vendors, commercial vendors, all the junior livestock animals, food trucks, and entertainment. We've got a large kid zone that we have this year, which is one half of it, it's a mini-golf, and then the other half of it is a huge pet and zoo, pony rides, with a kid's, like, zone in the middle of it, so.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun, a lot of work, but a lot of fun.
Exhausting.
It is very exhausting. It takes us all year long to plan for the fair. Plus, we have a lot of events that go on at the fairgrounds all year long.
And if you want to go look at the exhibits of the handcrafted items, is that open, the whole?
Yes.
When is the judging? It's not closed during a certain time, it's open the whole tender?
They judge before the fair opens.
Okay.
And then that way, all the ribbons and stuff are placed on all the items beforehand, and then they're all on display throughout the fair.
Okay. Any other questions for Mina? Okay, thank you for coming tonight.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, good luck.
You bet, thank you very much.
Of course. Okay, we'll move on then to Item D2, which is a presentation of drug trends and free services offered by Nexus Coalition. Vicki Solomon.
Vicki, will you just let me know when you would like me to move the slide for you?
You bet, thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I like to come and just give you updates every once in a while. My name is Vicki Solomon. I'm the Executive Director of Nexus Coalition, and I've been running the coalition for about nine years now. And I'm a lifetimeer in the White Mountains, 55 years I've been here. I have every white hair to prove it. I got into prevention because I love our community, and I love our youth and our community. And so I just wanted to show you just a few things that we've been doing. You've got a packet, and there's lots of information inside of there, so if you know of somebody that we are not partnering with, that we should be, please let us know, we're happy to do that. So just real quick, we'll see... Hold on. That's not working. One more. So the two, the two main reasons why you exist is, one of them is to educate youth on substance use, and then the second one is to build collaboration and partnerships. And we work with 12 different sectors throughout each of the communities. And we do have a grant that covers the Pinetop Sholo Lakeside area, and we have grants that cover Snowflake Taylor, and we have grants that are working into Holbrook and then throughout Navajo County. So we're slowly working on trying to get throughout all of Navajo County. So we'll go to the next, next slide. This is just a little snapshot, who are the 12 sectors? It's anybody that's breathing in Navajo County we want to work with, but these are some of the ones just off the top of my head you can look at. Go to the next one. And then what does Nexus actually do? We provide services for youth, and we also provide services for adults. We found out that with every kiddo, there's an adult that's attached to them, and a lot of times the adults don't know about the drugs that is going on in the community, so we want to make sure that they're aware of those. But also, we want to build resiliency, we want to teach these kiddos how to deal with stress, how to deal with it the best that we can, and then move forward with that. And so some of the things that we do, I'm going to cheat because I can't be this far away. So we've done 13,000 presentation, or, I'm sorry, for the youth, we've had 13,000 youth that's participated, we have 13,000 adults that have participated, we had 6,800 activities, we distributed 986 naloxone, which is the opioid reversal, and with every naloxone training that we do, it's a fentanyl naloxone training, and we hand out that free naloxone. So we don't just hand it out for free, we make sure and do that education piece, go with it. And then the 69,000, that's the item distribution, that's all the information that you guys see inside your little packet there. So there's a lot going on with only five and a half people working with inside of Nexus. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. So here's some local highlights, and instead of, instead of words, we're going to look at some photos. So go ahead and let's show them some photos. So these are the different things that we do. One of them that I absolutely love is called the Junior Leadership Academy. And for the Blue Ridge School District, we just had our 18th year that we just finished. That program has been running for 18 years, and it's amazing. And some of the things that they do is hiking with a hawk, they run the mile and they see the progression, they make new friends, they create these bottle rockets, they, they go into the senior center and they have conversations with the senior center. And we look at the community to see what we can show them and get them involved in the community, so they can be aware of those things that are going on. And then not only do we provide this for Blue Ridge School District, but we also provide this same service in White River, and we have about 15 youth in White River that participate, and that program's been running for 10 years. And then we recently, about four years ago, we started in Snowflake, and we run it in Snowflake. So we'll go to the next slide. Here's some of the comments from the caregivers or the parents. We always have extremely positive feedback on every single program that we run through, and I think the reason why is because we do what you guys just did, is we're accountable. We hand out surveys, and we ask their opinion, and then we come back and we fix those problems and challenges that we have. And so we always have lots of positive comments. We'll go to the next slide. Here's some more, we try to immerse ourselves into the community, anything that's going on, which you guys know that there's lots of going on in Pinetop Lakeside, and we try to participate in those things. We participate in the Safety Village, we participate, we were asked to teach a fentanyl naloxone workshop for the search and rescue, which was kind of interesting, because they've had lots and lots of naloxone education, and they actually said ours was the best so far. So I'm going to remember that one, because I was one of the ones helping teach on that. But we collaborate with the jail system. We just recently went and spoke with the, one of the new gals over there, Amy Bacon, and we're going to be over there once a week, starting next week, and we're going to provide some education into the reentry program where people are coming out, back into our communities. And we want to provide them with the five skills of resiliency and lots of other different things. So that's been a new partnership that we're very proud of. We'll go to the next slide. We have a really cool art contest that's been going on for 18 years. We have some very talented people, this was our first, second, and third prize. We always hit our tabling events, National Night Out with the police officers, we were able to join in on them. And then we've most recently been able to accept and be in part of the giving machine that will be here locally and also in Snowflake locally, so that's a very honored position for us to have. And we'll go to the next slide. And then this is the end. I just wanted a little snapshot. We do so many things, it's hard to just come and tell you one of the things that we do, because what we do is we listen to our community and we find out what you guys need and what you want, and then we try to provide those services. So here's just a few things of the different things that we provide. We do a lot of resiliency workshops for the adults, and then we also do that for the youth. We also do the fentanyl naloxone trainings. And then one thing that I'm very proud of is this new little, do you see the little stickers up there? I actually have those on my mug, and I stuck my mug, and yeah, she's going to give you some. I stuck my mug in the dishwasher, so they're dishwasher-proof, and so it will stay on whatever, you can stick them on whatever you want. But whenever you scan the little code on there, the QR code, it sends people to resources where they can actually get some help. If there's, if there's suicide ideation or different things like that, there's resources there. If they just want to talk to somebody, maybe they're lonely, there's resources there, lots of different kinds of resources. And so we have thousands of those that we're distributing out to all the different communities. There's some in your little packets, and I've also handed some out, so we're going to put those here in the building as well. But again, I just want to thank you for your time. I think there's one more slide that just talks about our, yeah, the 844 crisis line. Some people have asked me, what's the difference between the 988 and then this 844 number? This number right here is going to get you services faster. It's going to be similar to the same services that the 988 will send you, it just sends you in a longer direction to finally get you, get you the help. So we highly encourage, and we have this on every single one of our slides when we're out in the community with the youth and the adults, making sure that they know about this crisis helpline. So with that, is there any questions? And again, please feel free to refer people to me, let me know what we can help, do to help in the community.
Thank you, Vicki. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Do you guys currently have a program at the elementary school or anything like that?
Yes, we do. So we are in, we're actually, Blue Ridge is one of our champion schools. We're actually in the junior high every single week, and then we're working to get into the high school whenever we can, and we're trying to get into the elementary school. Before, there was a little bit of a roadblock, but we're, I think we're going to be able to get through this year into the elementary school.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, thank you, Vicki. We appreciate everything you do.
You bet, thank you.
Okay, have a good evening. We're going to move on then to Item D3, which is a public hearing, discussion, and possible legal action on ordinance number 25-485, amending Town Code Chapter 17.102 Medical Marijuana, Jeremiah.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. In review of our titles for medical and recreational marijuana, I found that they're actually illegal in the way that it was enacted. I get the intent in 2020 when we first visited, this issue was basically to say no without saying no for recreational marijuana. Problem is, we were regulating medical less stringent than recreational, so that's actually against state statute. So part of what we're doing here tonight is correcting that, so I'm bringing for you first the medical and then the recreational marijuana ordinances. It's very minimal changes in the medical ordinance, it's really just three things in 17, 102, 050, and it has to do with distances. The distance we had identified prior as 500 feet to a residentially-zoned property was reduced to 250. That's not a statutory requirement, it's something we just had in our ordinance. And then similarly with, we had a clause in the ordinance that dictated that they needed to be 1,000 feet away from elementary schools and religious places of worship, public parks, community centers of that nature. And that's not statutory either, why we could actually do that, that's not illegal, but the ADHS permitting authority says 500 feet. So that's, that's the three change, oh, there's one more actually. In reviewing the size of the dispensary that's located in Sholo, it's actually 3,000 square feet, and we had in our ordinance 1,000 feet, so I bumped that to 2,000 square feet. That's really the only changes here tonight for the medical section.
Any questions for Jeremiah at this point?
So are you saying they can be within 500 feet of a school?
First state statute and ADHS, Arizona Department of Health Service regulates it at 500 feet, that's correct.
But we can, we can make it 1,000 in the town?
If Council says so.
So the minimum is 500?
Yeah, we can go more stringent, just not less. So the problem is, when you look at the areas where this could actually be, there's very limited areas, actually, very, very limited properties if this could actually be done. It could be argued that it's unduly unreasonable, our ordinance, and therefore we would have to allow as many as possible. So the intent here tonight is to tighten up the ordinance to make it along line with state statutes, so we don't have 10 dispensaries, similar to the dollar store, if you ask, so we don't need one on every corner.
Vice Mayor.
Doesn't the state though regulate and limit how many dispensaries can be? And at this point, isn't that one per community?
So that's not actually true. We could dictate that, and when we get to the recreational component, we do just that, we limit it to a dual license that has, basically it'd be a dual-use dispensary for recreational purposes and for medical purposes, because it's taxed differently, actually.
And a follow-up to that, I mean, I guess, is there just one in Navajo County?
So I thought there, I thought there was more, but apparently the one in Sholo, I believe, is the only dispensary. They are allocated, like you said, by the state, and then we can further allocate that as well.
But it is both medical and recreational, right?
That's correct.
As has been brought up, I, I agree, I don't think we want any of these any closer than 1,000 feet to the schools, certainly. And, yeah, I can't see any reason why we would want that, and I think it still allows no place of availability.
Right, so, so for instance, Vice Mayor, I looked at the distance between elementary school and the C2 zoning district, which has the most or the least lax, the most lax requirements for, what was it, for growing marijuana. That was, so at 1,000 feet, you can actually do that in the business parks still, even on the south end of the business park, it's 1,000 feet away, and there's properties there that could be done there.
Yeah, there are some properties that, but it couldn't be done in the one that borders the school.
No, if it's within 500 or 1,000 or whatever, Council dictates tonight, that's what's, it wouldn't be able to be any closer than that. That's correct.
Okay. And I guess, just as a follow-up, since these are both tied together, we would have to change that distance on this item, and not just change it on the second one, since, again, recreational, medical.
Yeah, they need to be identical as far as the distances and how we regulate, so if we regulate 1,000, they both need to be 1,000, that's correct.
My concern would be if we leave it at 500 feet, you could put one right there by the theater across the street from the elementary school and the high school.
So that's actually not true because of other things in the ordinance. It's too close to residentially-zoned property. It's too close to, let's see, I don't know, there's probably not a church in that, actually there used to be a church close to there, but they were operating out of the senior center, so, but it's not true because of there's other factors would be, so, in looking at exactly where these, this could be located in our current ordinance, there's nowhere near that area that it would be able to be located, even if we changed ordinance to reduce it to 500, I don't think that that's possible, actually.
Even like where, like Iceland Automotive is, if they wanted to put one right there?
Iceland Automotive?
Right across from the circle.
Our ordinance wouldn't apply in that case, but I get your point. Back to the example of the Commerce Park that's actually in the town, they would actually still even be able to be there even at 1,000 feet.
Because that church is right there.
Well, yeah, I forgot about the church right there, so they wouldn't be able to be there. So it's another limiting thing in the ordinance, because that's really our only C2 zone, that and on Woodland Road, but there's no availability in there whatsoever, so. Could be argued that that's unduly unreasonable.
So I would like to ask the question, I know you've got maps that you have green zones, and you've really spent a lot of time on this. So where is a liquor establishment allowed to be? What are the restrictions on that?
I can't answer that. I know they, I think that they do have some separation, I didn't research that, maybe you know the answer.
I don't, I don't.
It's probably similar, but I don't know the answer, I wasn't looking for...
And I don't know the answer to this, does R and R Pizza serve beer and wine, right across the street from the school? I don't know the answer to that, do they? And in some ways, that is just as harmful, if not more so, than marijuana. I'm just being devil's advocate as far as being too restrictive, because we kind of have a unique situation with our commercial strip buttoning right up to residential all along, all the way through town, so.
It's very limiting with, the current ordinance says 500 feet... It's very limiting with, the current ordinance says 500 feet of residential, it's almost nowhere. Even on the, when I'm looking at that green zone map that I have, I think it's not accurate. I think there's less properties available than that map actually shows because of that part of the ordinance, which isn't even in statute.
And Department of Health regulates these pretty stringently, is my understanding.
They do, and they require a lot more than we would require, and we, but we also require them to be in good standing with ADHS. So if they lose or get their permit revoked or even part of it, then they wouldn't allow to be operate anymore in Pine Top Lakeside. You have to submit to police department, like very stringent protocols on how that facility is safe, we're requiring that it meet all building codes. So there's, there's a lot going on besides what you see on the dispensary.
So there's a whole, another set of guardrails besides what we have?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Let me just say, I mean, personally, I don't, I'm against recreational marijuana in the community. However, I sit on the council for the town of Pine Top Lakeside, so it's not my personal view, it's what's best for the community. And I understand we need to come into alignment with both of these. And I also understand, I mean, there are some positives, I mean, the PD stands to get.
They stand to get an infusion of cash.
Yeah. And that's on top of any taxes or whatever. I still, I cannot in good conscience go for this to be, I'm okay with the rest, again, as a council member, except for proximity to schools, and I think that needs to stay at 1,000 feet for the schools.
It's an easy fix, we can recraft the ordinance to put it in for 1,000 feet from schools.
Mayor Irwin and Jeremiah, if I might, I could answer your question on the liquor license. For the state of Arizona, it's 300 feet for a liquor establishment. It has to be away from a church or a school. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counsel Heisler.
I would just wanted to, first of all, I wanted to ask what the definition of a school is. I mean, is it, there's, there's microschools in the community, there's, there's, there's all kinds of, like, we could prevent it from going anywhere in the town, and of course, it comes into, when that establishment gets ready to pull a permit, right, then it's, it affects people directly, and they come in here to share their concerns. So I guess that would be my first question, is how is school defined? I mean, I see it in here as kind of-ish defined, but not really.
Yeah, it's not in the definitions here for this title, but I would default back to what the state, what the permitting authority describes as a school. So ADHS is gonna, already, they already have that requirement where, I mean, it's at least 500 feet, we could just use their same definition of what a school is, run with that.
All right, second, less serious question, does this come with a food truck ordinance?
All right, a food truck?
Food truck ordinance?
No, so there's no, if you look at it, delivery is not permissible.
The last que, I guess more of a statement is, we're not preventing this from being in our community.
It's already here.
I mean, we're not preventing it from being at the school because we're selling it 500 or 1,000 feet away from the school. It's here, it exists in the community all the time. And so I'm not necessarily sure what, what we gain by restricting it out of the community or, or even being more restrictive than state statute on, on being away from a school. As is pointed out, 300 feet away from a school, you can sell liquor. Kids at school like to get their hands on that if they can, too. So I guess that's, I don't know what we're, what we're saving by not doing it.
Yeah, I can tell you what we're missing out on revenue. And we were here at the budget meeting a few, a few short weeks ago, and we said, it was told us, we need to find a way to increase our revenue and reduce our expenditures, so this is one way to increase revenue. And it's already proven that it works in the city of Cholo, and they're getting a lot of money.
Is this going to be, if a store, is this going to be a municipally-owned?
No.
Store? Town going to own the store? I don't know.
Absolutely not.
But the TPT, the transactionary tax, the infusions from, for PD, for public safety, Dr. Sholo, they said they get two $50,000 infusions every year for, just for PD outside of TPT. And I believe that Timber Mesa and Pine Top Fire also get a piece of that, of that change.
It does, I would correct it a little bit and say that it, it's not directly linked to having a sales facility within your town or within your jurisdiction, it's more of a state shared revenue that gets kind of divided up amongst public safety organizations.
Yeah, state shared revenue based on number of active participants within the public safety pension system.
So I guess a question for Commander Wilkie would be, are we currently receiving any funds from that source?
I don't know the answer to that.
We do, we do get Prop 207 money, which is the, which is the marijuana tax, which is through statewide excise tax, and we've got $35,000 in the budget, we got $39,000 last year for that. Again, that's statewide sales, not local jurisdiction sales.
Okay.
So we have a follow-up question on that, so does that mean there won't be any greater infusion to the PD?
No, it'll just be through TPT collection.
I guess if the sales statewide go up because of the store, the answer would be.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Frenow.
Did you ever create a map to show what opportunities happen if we change zoning?
I have not, no. But I can tell you that what I've seen is very, very, very limited on where it could actually be in the current version. And as I mentioned, it's illegal, our current version is illegal.
And I can kind of talk to when, when we made it illegal back in 2020, and I think it was because it was an unknown. We didn't know how it was going to work, we didn't necessarily want, we were afraid of it, so to speak. And, and now that we see how it's working in other communities and seeing how well it's run and how safe it seems to have been, it's here. Our citizens are going to Cholo, so why not allow it, so to speak, here in Pine Top Lakeside? To Jeremiah's point, we need to increase our revenue. We can't, we can't continue our community growing without doing something to increase our revenue, cutting expenses is not the only way to do it.
Anyway, are there any other questions in the council? Vice Mayor? Harry, Counsel Turner?
I just wanted to let the, let my colleagues here know that I support the Vice Mayor's opinion on the distance. Much more comfortable at 1,000 feet.
Vice Mayor.
And just, that was kind of a follow-up question to you. I mean, as, again, as a counselor, I don't have any problem with any of it other than proximity to school. And I don't believe if we set that, keep that at 1,000, that's not going to adversely affect properties that are available.
No.
Community, right?
Yeah, you know, I think it's clear that there's a lot more churches in our community than schools, so, I mean, if we're limiting it to schools, I don't think that that's going to prevent somebody from coming here and doing this.
Okay.
And if this is a problem, it's a lot easier to go from 1,000 to 500 down the road than it would be to go from 500 to 1,000 if we do run into a problem.
Probably nearly impossible to do the other way.
I would suggest that we split the hairs, though, and leave, leave the churches at 500 and just have it exclusively for schools at 1,000.
That's reasonable. Okay, this is a public hearing tonight. I do have a couple citizens who would like to address this issue. Edith Weber.
I made some notes, but first of all, thank you very much for allowing me to address you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. In regarding to the, in regard to the zoning request change from 1,000 feet to 500 for any businesses in commercial areas that are within 500 feet of churches, schools, and residences, is what I'm trying to address, and I support two of your council members' feelings and thoughts about that. To clarify, we should know, however, as Mr. Councilman Frenow mentioned, that the properties should be listed on some sort of map that would be conducive to this kind of a business. I did a little bit of research on my computer, and I found out that there are six marijuana distribution, distribution centers within our area of Cholo and the environs. Jars Cannabis, Pure Cana Organics, Noble Herb, Consume Cannabis, which is also called Compa, it's that big, huge warehouse just behind Cholo Ford in, in the town, it's, it's like a warehouse, it's huge. And then Mossum Seeds, which is a new place in Cholo. So we have quite a number, plus Green Hill's Patient Center distributes and sells as well. So we, we have facilities already, and I just don't understand why we have to continue cracking up our community ties from a reasonable zoning to an unreasonable zoning. Let's go beyond politics and stay within the town's budget constraints and follow the social implications of our communities, such as the reason for having zoning restrictions in the first place. 1,000 feet is 1,000 feet from churches, schools, homes. And, you know, encroaching that kind of stuff into the community for the sake of the dollar should not be that, it should be for the sake of the people that live here. Thank you.
Thank you. David Wesley.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Vice Mayor. So I'm elated to hear the discussion about 1,000 feet away from the school. Just consider the optics of, congratulations, class of 2026, and just down the road, 500 feet is a tenth of a mile. So consider the optics of somebody coming to town, you have a, congratulations to your students, and buy, buy your marijuana here, you know. So one other thing to consider is, is really balance, like, okay, we need to comply with state law, that's clear. So how many, by decreasing these, these distances, how many potential locations for dispensaries are impacted, right? We don't know the answer to that. So I love the idea of, of keeping it 1,000 feet until we have that analysis, maybe not a full-scale study, but an analysis that shows, we're actually reducing the possibility of revenues to the town. By how much, that's an unknown at this point, so making a decision to decrease lower than 1,000 feet at this point is without full information. Thank you.
Thank you. As it's a public hearing, if there's anybody else that wants to address us, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and ask our council's wishes. Counsel Phillips.
Just one more question. Do we have any companies that have put in an application to have one of those stores here yet?
So there is not a specific company, but there is a group that does zoning clearances for these companies that I am having conversations with, yes.
So there are interests?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Counsel.
Jeremiah, though, in your discussion with that group, have you identified locations for them?
Have I identified locations? They, they gave me a green zone map that showed the possible locations. There was probably less than a half a dozen or...
Did you, did you agree with those locations?
Some of them wouldn't work, what, what they were thinking wouldn't work, because they don't have eyes on the ground, they were too close to the residentially zoned properties that they were initially looking at, yes.
So you eliminated some of them?
So you eliminated half of those that they sent me, which was probably maybe a half a dozen or a few more, but it eliminated those ones because there's residentially zoned property right behind me, so.
It kind of sounds like they've done some of the work, you know, to, to do that, because I know it's hard. How hard would it be to produce that map for us before we made that decision? I'd love to know.
They could produce that map, they did very readily, I'm sure I could, too. But they're, they already have somewhere in mind, and it's nowhere near a school, it's nowhere near a school or a church.
So what we vote on tonight does not affect that?
Right.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. All right, are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll give you a question, and I'll try to, so I move to adopt ordinance number 25-485, amending chapter 17, 102, medical marijuana, as presented with the exception of schools are still, they're prohibited for being any closer than 1,000 feet to schools. That probably could be condensed better, but.
We get the gist. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Counsel Turner. We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously, I apologize, you can raise your left. Okay, we're, I appreciate everybody's comments on that one. Thank you, Jeremiah. We'll move on then to item D4, which is a public hearing, discussion and possible legal action on ordinance number 25-486, amending town code, chapter 17.114, recreational marijuana. Jeremiah, again.
Mayor and counsel, this item directly related to the last item, this section of the title has a lot more edits, because basically, in a nutshell, it said, to the fullest extent possible, prohibited, right? So I had to change the title. I looked at Cholo's, but it was kind of like a scatter shot, like a shotgun, just all throughout their title, I didn't like the way they had that crafted, so I looked towards Prescott, and they had a single-use clause as well. Cholo actually has a dual, they have two licensed max in their, in their ordinance, that's what it says. So, yeah, it points back to the medical chapter, so things are regulated very, very similarly. There's no discrepancies in the title, I went through this very, very extensively with town attorney Bill Sims, and we got something that works. We can easily adjust the distances for schools to 1,000 feet, I don't, that would be the one change that would be necessary to match up with the medical title. So hopefully you guys had a chance to read through this, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Jeremiah? Okay, thank you, Jeremiah. This is a public hearing, so I do have one request from David Wesley to speak to us again. Come on up.
Vice Mayor, members of the council, my discussion points for this agenda item are moot, given your last vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address us during a public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Any other questions from the council? I'd entertain a motion, then. Vice Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance number 24-485, amending chapter 17.102, medical marijuana, oh, whoops. I'm on the wrong.
Wrong one.
Sorry about that. I move to adopt ordinance number 25-486, amending chapter 17.114, recreational marijuana, as presented with the exception of cannot be any closer than 1,000 feet.
Do I have a second?
A second, then.
Thank you. It's been moved in second to approve this ordinance, is further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeremiah, appreciate you being here today. Item D5, information discussion and consideration of resolution number 25-1786, approving an intergovernmental agreement for dispatch services. Commander Wilkie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, this is to renew it, renew an ongoing agreement we have with the city of Cholo for consolidated dispatch. We do this every three years, so this is, this is not a new thing. We do pay a fee for this service, which is based on our calls for service, but that stays pretty steady, so the cost is also pretty steady.
Okay. Pretty straightforward. Are there any questions for Commander Wilkie?
Make a motion.
Any questions? Seeing none, Counsel Heisler.
I move to adopt resolution number 25-1786, approving an intergovernmental agreement for dispatch services between the city of Cholo and Arizona Municipal Corporation City and the Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District, Heber Overguard Fire District, Pinedale Clay Springs Fire District, Pine Top Fire District, Vernon Fire District, and all fire districts organized pursuant to Title 48, Chapter 5 of the Arizona revised statutes, districts and town of Pine Top Lakeside, Taylor, Snowflake, Eager, Springerville, towns, and all municipal corporations, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
I'll second that.
Thank you, it's been moved in second, and further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Commander Wilkie. Item D6 is information discussion and possible legal action to approve the July 2025 financial report. I'll turn this over to Sarah Simonton and Gabe Buller from the James Vincent Group.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. You guys have the July financial report in the packet. Kind of as I mentioned last month, going forward, we'll actually do a presentation on the previous month's financials at the council meeting. Realize this is July, so we'll actually start going forward at the second council meeting of the month, present the previous month financials, so, a little hard to have, you know, August closed out by this meeting, so. So a little hard to have, you know, August closed out by this meeting, so. Kind of some high-level overview on the financials. So total revenues for the general fund were $731,159. I am happy to report, when you look at it from a percentage in the reports, it looks like we're a little bit under, but that's taken into account the contingency revenue that was plugged in there, as well as the carryover revenue that was plugged in. If you take those out, we're actually ahead of our revenue projections for the month by about $90,000, so good there. We did see a little bit of a decline in our sales tax collection over the previous year, same time of about 6.2%. You know, retail was actually up year-over-year. You know, our restaurant and bars stayed relatively flat, but really in the commercial and construction, we're both down relatively significantly over the previous year. However, that total impact, again, only about 6%. Looking at our expenses for the general fund, we've expended a total of $639,436. That was about 6.5% of our budget. Again, first month, our target's 8.3%, so revenue was over what was budgeted, expenses were under, which we like to see. Couple variances I do want to point out, just to kind of explain. Magistrate was at 64.5% of their budget. That's due to our agreement with Navajo County for the clerk's office. That's an annual payment that's made, so that's what's driving that large variance. The only other significant variance I do want to point out was council as well, and that's because the dues to leagues and cities and towns is due in July, and again, that's an annual payment. Also, these aren't very large budgets overall in comparison, so when they have an expense like this, especially early on, it throws a larger variance on the budget. One thing I do want to point out, too, is just where our money's going. I think it's important for our clients, whether it's a council or a board, to understand what are our cost drivers within the community. And personnel is our highest expense at 72.5% of our total expenses. Our managerial costs, that's our professional fees, administrative expenses, is at 17.6, operations at 9.5, and then trainings a very small percentage at about .3. As far as special funds or other non-general fund expenditures, you'll see there's a total of $557,000 expended. Really only one variance I really just want to point out was under streets and HIRF, and that was predominantly due to timing of not only the drainage project that's now complete, there's also some work, streets maintenance that was done. And so that's what's really driving that percentage variance, but again, it's project-based, so it's not overspending, it's just based on the timing of those projects. Finally, kind of finish up with our fund balance, you know, analysis and kind of where we're going. This is one of the things, if you look at the actual finance report itself, the very last page is a 12-month cash flow, and that's looking at our general fund. That's kind of our barometer and our target, and where we're sitting right now at the month of July is our general fund cash is at $1,279,000, which is down by $133,000 from June. So from a general fund perspective, that's our cash burn, about $130,000 a month. But kind of the significant thing, which is reflected in the graphs, is down 2.8 million from kind of the prior year at the same time. And then right now, we're sitting at $1,279,000, based on budgeted revenues and budgeted expenses through the rest of the year, that's where we're getting that projected general fund balance at $881,000. And so as we talk through, and some of the other items on the agenda today, I know we have a special meeting coming up next week, that's what we need to focus on is our financial health, and that's that barometer that, you know, we're looking at, we're providing that information to council to look at as we move forward, and these decisions are being made. With that, I'll be happy to answer any additional questions the council may have.
Any questions from the council for Gabe or Sarah? Thank you for getting these to us. That's a very good overview of everything. I haven't seen June financials. Have those been issued yet?
Those have, so we can send these to you.
Thank you. I know I've gotten April and May, but it's kind of hard when you skip a month, so thank you. Anytime. Okay, any other questions?
I guess just one clarifying question, if I may. So you might understand we're overspending at a rate of like $130,000 a month? Is that what's chewing away at...
That was between June and July, so, and part of that is because of some of these projects, so there is a function of timing on that. But again, we are, we had positive performance in our budget this month, so that actually flipped our cash burn projected, but we're projected from a budget perspective to spend about $700,000 of fund balance this year.
Again, the timing things, you know, like you pay the magistrate so much, and, you know, so those really...
Right.
Kind of skew it, and...
The $130,000 you're seeing, as Mayor's trying to explain, is more of a function of timing on the overall, what the overall projected cash burn is, though. Because if we continued at this rate, obviously we'd be well over, you know, 1.2 million, and that's not what we're projecting. But there were some expenses that occur in the month of July that kind of accelerated that somewhat a little bit.
I guess what I was trying to put my finger on then was, based on where you're saying $800,000 we would spend over the course of the year out of fund balance, then that would be probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $65,000 a month on average that we're...
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Turner.
Earlier conversation, how many P-cards do we have out there? How many employees have them?
We've got, actually got the list today from Stacy. We've got, I mean, like, I was sitting around 20, 25 P-cards.
Would be the department heads and certain key employees.
Yes, I think, Counselor Turner, that's, again, one of the things that, as we're working through everything, and one of the things is strengthening our financial policies and processes and practices. There is a lot going on P-cards that we need to look at and evaluate and shift back to running through the AP process as well, where things could actually be kind of caught from, you know, Mr. Miller's perspective or another, before, you know, funds are actually expended.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? This is possible legal action to approve the July 2025 financial report. Do I have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to approve the July 2025 financial report as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion of seconds or further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, both of you. Appreciate all your work on that. Item D7, discussion and possible legal action on ordinance number 25-487, amending town, excuse me, amending Town Code Chapter 2.04, Section 2.04.060, emergency meetings, and 2.04.100H, mayor elections and duties. Kristi.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This item came to me by, when a council member asked me how many council members it takes to put an item on the agenda. My immediate answer was three, that when I went back and looked at our Town Code, our Town Code only allowed the mayor and town manager to set agendas. So the best practices across Arizona municipalities, when I reached out to cities and towns, was the mayor, manager, or two council members. So I spoke with Attorney Bill Sims. He agreed with that. State statute allows for cities and towns to come up with that number. And as Bill and I, you know, investigated this a little bit farther, we decided, and he decided, that it would be best if we changed our code that, to allow two council members to add an agenda item. Two council members to be able to call an emergency meeting if there was something important, like an evacuation, and we couldn't get a quorum here, that two was appropriate. And three council members will keep this the same as what's in our code currently to call a special meeting, because a special meeting would need a quorum. So our recommendation is to amend our Town Code, Chapter 2.04 and 2.04.108. This would post for 30 days with council approval and then be effective after 30 days of posting.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. Any questions, comments for Kristi? This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address us tonight? Okay, seeing none, I will go... Oh, I'm so sorry.
I didn't fill out the cards.
That's okay. Come on up, Abby. I didn't see you sitting over there.
I mean, Abby Crozier's been in the town for, since 1981, we lived on the mountain. I'm concerned, when I look at the agenda, I don't understand why we need to make this change now with all the things that are going on in our town and all the upheaval, in my opinion, that I have seen and whatnot. I would like to hear council members discuss their opinions on this and why they think that this needs to be amended. It has worked well. I guess as a citizen, as a taxpayer, as someone that's been very, very involved in our community and lived here for a very long time, I would love to hear the reasons and additional information on this. Thank you.
Counselor Heiser?
I would just, I'll be honest with anybody. I asked for this item to be put on the agenda, to be very honest. I have asked for this item to be put on the agenda. If you guys go back four months ago, I brought it up in an open town council meeting, that if council members wanted a special meeting, if they wanted to put an item on the agenda, I believe that the proper chain of command would be you would go to the mayor, or you would go to the town manager, and you would say, "I would like an item to be placed on the agenda." If the mayor or the town manager says no, then I have now lost my ability to talk to three other council members, because that would be a violation of open meeting law. So I'm not sure how it got set to three council members, or the mayor, or the town manager, but I believe a conundrum exists for a council members to be able to put an item on the agenda if they've already spoken to another elected official about that item, then they've lost the ability to talk to other council members to get an item put on the agenda. And this is standard procedure, as far as I know, in other government entities across the state, to have a rule that says two council members or two board members can put an item on the agenda for discussion or a topic for presentation. And so that's why I asked for the item to be put on the agenda. It may not be the best timing right now, but again, you can go back into various study sessions and look at the minutes, and you can also go to an open council meeting about four months ago, when I brought up this particular topic as a conundrum in Town Council Code, which to me puts you in a contradictory position with Arizona open meeting law.
Counselor Heisler, can I make a correction? Our Town Code doesn't currently even allow three council members to put an agenda item on. It is only the mayor and town manager. That's why we checked into best practices across cities and towns in Arizona. And for transparency and to allow other council members to have a voice, it was best practice to have, allow two people to do that. I hope that addresses Ms. Crozier's concerns as well.
Just to follow up with that, I mean, I still recall when I received the training from the cities and towns on, as a new council member, probably the last time of that was four years ago. That's what the instruction they gave us is, it was to, just what we're talking about right here. So it is, it's being, it's what everyone else in the state does.
Okay, is there anybody else that wants to address us during the public hearing? Okay. Yes. That's all right. Take your time.
I'm Joe Crozier, retired EMS director, fire marshal, and vice president of Vayre Ambulance Company. Thank you for listening to me. I'm confused because from my understanding, a person approaching the mayor and the town manager, and their turn down for putting something on the agenda, why does it go any further? Why would you have to talk to other council members about that? It's a dead subject. That's my question. Can I...
Counselor Heisler can probably answer his opinion on that one.
I would tell you, it's because that allows two people in the elected body of individuals up here to drive the agenda of anything the council's allowed to talk about. And I don't think that's how the system was designed. I think the system was designed, if you look at the duties and the powers of the mayor versus the rest of the council, they're exactly the same, with the exception of setting an agenda and being a spokesperson for the town, but it does not necessarily limit other council members from being able to talk about topics that are important to the constituents that they talk to. And so if constituents are coming in and saying, "Hey, we would like to discuss an item," and you go to the mayor and the town manager, and I'm not saying that's happened, and you say, "I'd like to put this item on the agenda," and in that circumstance, the mayor says no, then I can't bring my constituents' concerns to the community or speak to the other council members about it, because I can't get it on an agenda. And I think that's where the conundrum exists, and I think that in fire boards, it's the same way. There are multiple board members can ask for an item to be placed on an agenda, and it's like that in many cities and towns across the state, which allows every council member to have a voice in what their constituents are telling them are important and what things they think need to come before the council.
Okay.
And I might have to comment, too. I mean, just if I can, that, you know, my opinion on it is, I think it's a great move to do this while we have a great council, and anything that I've brought before, Madam Mayor, any concern has been addressed or brought to the, but maybe we're concerned about future setups, and we don't have the trust of a longtime trusted mayor here. But the other thing that, you know, the process of going through the mayor has a benefit of, if we have a carefully selected, great mayor like we do now, I mean, the ability for her to pump the brakes on me that might be a little fiery is a really good thing before we just throw it out there. And so the experience of that, you know, the processes, I see both, but I also see the future for maybe a position that we don't know and trust as well, for that to be a safeguard for the town.
Okay, good.
Does that help, Joe?
Well, it does help.
Okay.
I guess my response to that is that probably shouldn't be appointed a position if we don't trust him, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion unless there's any further comments from the council. No further comments? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve ordinance number 25-487, amending Town Code Chapter 2.04, I'm sorry, 2.04, Section 2.04.100H, allowing two council members to request the addition of an agenda item to a town council meeting by submitting their request to the town clerk at least eight days prior to a scheduled town council meeting, and amending Section 2.04.060, authorizing the mayor or two council members to call an emergency meeting to ensure the town can respond promptly to urgent matters.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion of seconds or further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand, excuse me, your hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Kristi. We move on then to item D8, which is discussion, information, and considered legal action of the updated employee salary ranges for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Manager Miller.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. In your report here, you'll see that in fiscal year 2223, the town council contracted with a consultant to complete a comprehensive salary and benefit study. The study was finalized in February of 2022. However, based on our research here, it was never brought forward for the town council for their formal review and adoption. At that time, the council has approved adjustments through two COLA increases. There was a 3% cost of living adjustment in 2023, a 3% cost of living adjustment in 2024, and then it was a, what I would consider, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, a $2 per hour increase for all employees as a one-time salary increase. I'd almost look at that as a bonus, something that wouldn't be attributed to the salary range, but more of a bonus that particular year. What we're requesting from the council this evening is, this doesn't affect the town financially, but to adopt formally the comprehensive study that was previously adopted with the adjustments of the 3% in those two years. adjustments of the 3% in those two years. We would recommend that the council adopt the salary study as we, as it's presented in your packet. If you wish, you direct the staff to consider something else, but that's really kind of what we base our salary ranges on was that study that was done in 2223. Happy to answer your questions, or there may be others here that were here at the time that can shed some light on this, but that's our recommendation.
Okay. So I, I've been really thinking about this a lot, and we have this $2 per hour increase, which is not included in this pay range, but that's an ongoing increase. So by not including that in these salary ranges, we're effectively punishing our employees because if you look at the next item where we've got, and I know we're not on that item, but we've got employees that are now considered to be out of the salary range. We gave them that raise. How, I don't think it's right for us to not include that in that salary range because that's an ongoing thing. When we did that, that was with ARPA funds or Arizona Carriage Funds. I don't recall exactly which pot of money it came out of, but we had that conversation that we're not going to take that away from our employees. So I really think when you look at this, I really feel like we need to look at that a little bit more carefully.
Mayor, when I, I understand your concern there. I think, I think what happened maybe back then is that there was an infusion of money into the town and towns across Arizona, the ARPA money related to COVID situation. And, and, you know, some places gave bonuses, they weren't intended to be counted towards, you know, because that's a one-time influx of money for the town. If you give a $2 raise, that becomes a permanent, where the, where the ARPA money isn't permanent. It was a one-time injection of money into the community, and I think that's to some extent what created some of our financial concerns that we have today is that we're, you know, we've got, we're a little upside down with that $2 raise. It's perpetual and not.
Vice Mayor was on the council at the time, Counselor Smith, and you remember, we actually had that conversation that we put this, it's not a one-time thing. It was a continual, do you remember that, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I do.
And so I really, I really feel like that action on behalf of the council has maybe put some of our employees out of the approved salary range. So that's my opinion, you know, I opened it up for everybody else, probably have different opinions, and that's fine. That's why we have seven people up here. Counsel Heiser?
I guess I would say that I, I remember, I actually was here too. I remember this conversation. It was a $2 an hour increase for all employees is the way I remember it being talked about. However, I, I mean, I've been working for government most of my adult life, and people don't get raises outside of their salary scale. So I assumed from a management perspective that if somebody was topped out in their range, they would not be getting this raise that everybody else would be getting.
The $2 an hour?
Correct. Because that's, again, that's, maybe I should have asked more questions, and I'll take responsibility for that. But in, in other organizations I've worked for, the top of your range, that's the most money you can make. You can't go any higher than that.
I guess I remember it differently because I remember that exact conversation, and I believe it was Counselor Paul Watson at the time saying, if we're giving this $2 an hour raise, we're not going to take it away the next year. I feel like we're taking it away. Any other questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Counsel for no.
So, you know, I mean, over the last, since, since this salary range set was made, I mean, if we look at nationwide, what's happened to different trades and their incomes, they've, there's different trades that have, that have changed a lot, escalated way more than others. And, and so I, I don't know that I like that, you know, these, these job titles and definitions maybe don't cover us. And so I personally would, before I really would want to vote on it, I would want to relook at job descriptions and see if we're really, if we have somebody that's falling into that category, or maybe they're doing way outside of their job description just because, because that's what's needed for the town to survive. And then, and then we revise those job descriptions because this doesn't have much, I mean, I trust it, but it doesn't have complete relevance to me, especially with what's changed over, over the last couple of years. I mean, if you look at other trades like HVAC or electric, electricians, those have escalated way more than other, other trades. And so I don't know that, you know, what, what we've done here has, has been accurate, just blanketly adjusting everything. So that's, that's one of my concerns with that.
Councilman for no, Mayor?
Yes.
One of the things that the council elected to do was to pay a consultant, and I don't know what the cost of that study was, but it was, I'm sure, pretty sizable. Generally, they earn the $50,000 to $60,000 range if you're going to hire someone to do that. The League of Arizona Cities and Towns every year does a similar survey of benchmark positions, which every town and every city throughout, and counties for that matter, throughout the state of Arizona, pay these benchmark positions. Obviously, the larger cities, Phoenix, Mesa, Scottsdale, their ranges are much higher. They have the revenue to, to afford some of those higher salary ranges. We looked at, I think, what we typically would find in a community like ours is to look at the, the league survey that's done every year, there's no cost to us, and evaluate our benchmark positions against communities in our area like Eager, Sholo, those areas that we compete against directly for employer, for the employees. A lot of these job descriptions are very similarly written. We can go in and look at job descriptions, and I'm sure that they're, when you're in a small community like ours, you have to wear a lot more hats.
Right.
There's no doubt. I mean, smaller communities, when you're hired into a position, you do a lot more than what a position of, of similar title does in a larger town, and those people get paid more. It's just a function of what you're required to do with a smaller budget and, and so I think what we're trying to do here is, one of the problems that we've had, I think, is that we've, we've had management approve positions, approve adjustments to positions that haven't been equitable across the board. I think it's important that we try to find some equity so we don't have the morale concerns that certain departments and employees are getting paid outside of a pay range that, that maybe is a max versus those that have been here a long time that are maybe at midpoint. And so we're just trying to, you know, come up with a, a solution to, I think, a longstanding problem that's created a little bit of a morale concern here amongst employees where some people, some maybe feel like others have been treated differently. That's, that's what we're trying to get to the bottom of.
Any other questions or comments?
I was just going to say that I, I mean, one of the things that I think is missing from this particular study is we have employees at the town right now that are not on it. Those people need to be added to this before, I mean, or with a motion for those positions to be added, they need to be added to this position or to this salary range study because otherwise we're in the same conundrum where we have people currently working here that aren't on this list.
That's what's in a separate action on the agenda coming up.
Okay.
That question comes up in a separate action on the agenda.
The only, the only other thing that I would say is I did do a little bit of research on this topic, and if you look at these salaried positions within similar-sized towns or within this region, we actually are, in some cases, still paying higher for many of these jobs with their minimum and maximum range points than other cities, towns, the county in, in very similar positions. Now, I will say this, to your point, Todd, I can go into the public sector, into the private sector, and I can go out and I can make a lot more money. And as a young man, that's what was important to me was I wanted to see dollars in my paycheck. As an older man, especially with my arm the way it is now, other things started to become important to me, like insurance for myself and my family, a retirement plan for, for later in life. If you would have talked to me about a retirement plan at 25 years old, I would have laughed at you because it just wasn't important to me. It was so far away, I wasn't even thinking about it. That's the things in the legacy expenses that a town or a city or a fire district or any other government agency takes on for an employee that keeps them from making that wage at $100,000 a year that they would in the private sector. And I don't think we can confuse the two things because this town will pay for those employees long after they leave the town, and we have to be able to absorb that cost long-term as well.
The other thing, as Gabe pointed out earlier in his presentation, 73% of our total budget is salaries and benefits. It's a big number. And as we look at the budget, and we look at where we are and what we might need to do, you know, that employees and salaries are a big part of the equation of making sure we're balanced and moving forward in a fiscally responsible way.
Well, I'm not suggesting that we pay top range at all. I'm just suggesting that our actions, giving that $2 an hour, which ended up being a permanent increase, I feel like we're penalizing. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I could say, I've always, I mean, in this region, Pinetop Lakeside is the most expensive area to live. I would say in Navajo County. Now, that being said, there's only a handful of our employees who actually live in the town of Pinetop Lakeside, and that is the reason why, is because it is so expensive to live here. So I, I mean, I have no problem with us being up towards the top in the pay scale on those things. I, I do recall, as the mayor has brought out, and the $2, it was discussed there, that that should be kept in. But I, my other question to you is, how does this compare to the Cities and Towns 2024?
Well, the comparison is very similar. In fact, we can probably get you those numbers, that's easy enough to do. They go up a little bit higher.
I haven't pulled open if there's a specific job you want me to look at.
I mean, are they higher than us or are they lower than us or are they really comparable?
I guess we can look into that. We're 6% higher than what we were in 2022, plus the $2 an hour raise. Other cities and towns have done similar actions, what I've found, in jurisdictions is that you, you see a competition for these jobs, and the minute you raise a job of a police officer, for instance, so you're more competitive and you can bring people on, their cities and towns are raising their salaries to compete and to take those jobs back away. And so it becomes this race, and the, the towns that have the revenue, that have the, the retail, and, you know, the population and the state share tax and all the other revenue generators, we don't have as much here. We have a population, we've talked about this before, of about 4,000, a little over 4,000 people, but we serve over 10,000 people on a pretty regular basis with all the houses and the people that are transient, with, with no property tax, with those, no revenues that some of those other larger jurisdictions enjoy. That's why it's hard to compete with higher wages because we don't have the revenue that allows or forces to do so.
Can I add to that? I was also here during that salary study and spoke with Matt Weatherly on the phone several times when getting job descriptions together for him and taught him, our job descriptions, yes, a small town, we do a lot of jobs. It also says on there and every, anything else that you're directed to do, and unfortunately, there's a lot of people in this town who do a lot of jobs. My question to them was, if you're looking at our population compared to Eager, Springerville, Taylor, was to keep our employees to going 10 miles down the road to Sholo. So they built it to be competitive with Sholo, knowing we couldn't match them. But with that said, I remember that $2 an hour raise was given to us to get us into the range. We were so far behind on pay at that time, it barely brought, like, our officers and a lot of our staff into the pay range.
The only thing I want to add to this is there's differences between cost of living adjustments and merit pay increases. Cost of living adjustments impact the wage scale and set our min and our max of our wage scale. Those are our parameters. Things like a $2 an hour raise, while the decision to use one-time money for ongoing expenses has its challenges, it doesn't change that min and that max. And so when we give merits, merits keep our, our people, yes, if we offer, you know, a $2 an hour merit increase, that doesn't move our min and max. So, but if we turn around and we say we're going to give a cost of living adjustment, a 3% cost of living, that's what moves the scale. And so that's what, you know, Rick and Christie did when they looked at that wage scale, is let's apply cost of living adjustments because under normal practices, that moves the scale. The $2 an hour raise is more considered a merit-type increase and would not move the actual entire scale.
Go ahead, Counsel Heiser.
I guess I, I would have to disagree with the $2 an hour raise putting us in the range of that because, I, I mean, without, without picking on anybody, right? I did a public records request, I looked at documents, and there were multiple raises given out over the course of the last three years that were not approved by this council to employees for various reasons. And I believe that is where you look at and find that, that employees have gone outside of the range. And I believe that by correcting the, this salary study with the 6% COLAs that actually were authorized by council, we reduced the number of people that were outside of their high point, I think over half, from when I was originally looking at it, so.
That's almost a different issue. You know, unauthorized raises are not part of this $2 an hour and the 3%.
I, I understand that, but I don't think that's how we got there. To Christie's point, that was a salary correction, and, and as I said, I think Gabe just explained, my understanding of anything other than a COLA is the wage scale doesn't change. The people that are eligible for that raise inside their scale get it. I didn't understand, I didn't understand that we were thereby adjusting the whole wage scale by $2 an hour because that is a significant amount of money for a town with 60 employees.
Do you recall that we had a pay scale in 2020 that we had adopted?
Again, this was 2022. Yeah, well, it hadn't been.
Right.
Yeah. It was never approved by the council.
I guess that's kind of the point I'd like to, to avoid future conflicts and problems. It'd be nice to have the council adopt a, adopt a, a wage scale, similar to what we're asking for tonight. The other items relate to the employees that are in positions that were never listed in the 2022 salary benefit study. We can address those and figure out what to do with those, whether they fit, how they fit. There was never a wage scale for those positions. I think, I would suspect that anybody that's hired within the organization was hired with the knowledge of what the, the entry level position would, would pay and what the maximum would be. Most job descriptions have an entry level and a maximum pay. We could go back and look at some of those positions that were hired to find out if, I mean, you know, who, you know, how did it, how did we authorize more pay than what the maximum wants? That's a big question, and it's, it's become a little bit of a problem that we're trying to work through.
Mayor, if I may, I have a, a comparison for you. So I've pulled up, and I'm going to use the town clerk as an example. I'll put myself out there. Eager is about the same size as us, 4,437 is their population. Their town clerk in the League of Arizona Cities and Towns ranges is 62.4 to $90,539. Ours is 64.79 to $97,000. We're $7,000 higher than Eager already. That's without, if we added that $2 an hour, you got to add $4,000 on top of that.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
How do we compare to Sholo?
How do we compare to Sholo?
Again, and Sholo's a bigger city. A lot more revenue than us.
Let me scroll up a little bit here. Sholo doesn't always answer all the questions on here, but let me double check. Okay. Sholo's is starting at 69, ending at 9, or 100. So if we did add that $2, we'd be over Sholo for a population of 12,192, three times our size.
I'd say we're certainly comparable on that one, and, and good, I would say.
If you add up our county island to the 4,000 folks that are in the incorporated town limits, the Sholo population and the Pinetop Lakeside population are about the same. 12.5 versus 11,000?
Or Sholo may claim some of those wagon wheel folks as their residents rather than ours, you know, in all reality.
I mean, that's a good comparison.
Yeah.
I don't know. $2 an hour was supposed to be a one-time, one-time award for all employees, $2 an hour. I didn't think it was meant to be a repetitive annual $2 an hour. I thought it was just to get us caught up at one year. When I grew up, a merit raise was based on my job. When I grew up, a merit raise was based on my job performance. It wasn't like I got an automatic raise for coming to work. I had to outperform, or at least perform, the duties that my boss wanted me to do. The cola is different. Cost of living is cost of living. But this, to me, shouldn't be an annual. This should be something that's managed every year based on what we're going through right now, revenue, cost of living. We want to hang on to our good employees. Some of them, maybe all of them, I don't see their performance reviews. Should get a merit raise of some kind.
In a perfect world, we would love to be able to give everybody merit raises, but unfortunately, that's not the reality this year. And it may not be the reality next year, I don't know. Vice Mayor?
And I would say we have done that when we could. I mean, we have always tried to give our employees merit raises, as well as cost of living raises.
Because they are our greatest asset.
They are.
They are our greatest asset. So, I'm hearing lots of different things here. Counselor Frenow believes we need to study this further, it sounds like, with job descriptions.
It does sound like more discussion has happened on that from a staff perspective than I thought. But at the same time, I mean, coming from the self-employed sector, if I gave my employee a $2 an hour raise, and all of a sudden I took it away from them, that, it would have only been because they did something wrong, and it would actually have been job removal. Not, not, I would, I've never, ever had to reduce a salary's wage. So, the discussion of the $2 an hour thing, to me, seems crazy that we would, you know. If that was talked about, that it was a one-time increase, I can't imagine why we're talking about decreasing it or pulling it.
I think it's important to clarify really quick what was just said. Not taking the $2 raise away from employees that are within the range, they would continue to enjoy the $2 raise that was given. Anybody that falling outside the range, above what was previously approved, would potentially be brought back down to the maximum in that range.
That's not this item, though.
That's a separate item.
You're talking about taking, adding the $2 an hour to the salary ranges, Todd.
Right now.
Yeah.
That was already.
That's what Mayor was talking about, yeah.
No, it's.
It's not included in the salary range, but the understanding, when we voted on that in 2022, was that we were not taking that away, that was going to be an ongoing.
So, kind of, it should be in this range.
I don't know what.
Go ahead.
And talking about this, I'm not sure it does need to be included in this range. We are not taking away $2 an hour from our employees across the board, obviously. And I understand what you're getting at, and I think it's fine, actually, to not have it included in this salary range. Again, if we're competitive with others in the area, and I, I mean, Cholo really is who we have to compare with, I mean, but we see, in the one example you gave, and maybe we do need to look at more, I would almost say, take the two together. But I guess what the Cities and Towns puts out, is that just the information they get from?
It's, it really is what a lot of communities look at when they're, in their annual budget processes, they want to make sure where their employees are, you know, when employees are saying, "We need more of this," we go back and look, the towns go back and look at what other cities and towns are doing as a guide. It's just a guide.
It is a guide.
And it's free. It's a free service, which is even better. But, you know, with any of these ranges, you know, let's just take, for example, well, we don't have a finance director, we have a finance contractor now, but we have a finance director, starting at 91,094, up to 136,642. There's a big difference between the low and the high. If that person was given a $2 raise, he's still within that range, he's not over the maximum. In some cases, it may have put him over the max, but for most employees, they're still within that range.
I had a misunderstanding, so.
I think a big concern for me is, any employees hired, if we add that in our salary range, any employees hired after today would be started $2 an hour higher than some employees who might have started a month ago. So, I mean, that means we have to maintain that $2 an hour going forward for new employees, not just the employees who are here at that time, getting them back into the salary range, and we don't have the revenue to support that.
Yep, understood.
And I'm not 100% certain, but I'm pretty certain when we were looking at PAFs, that $2 an hour raise for that year was actually documented as a merit increase approved by council. It was not a cost of living adjustment, so it should not have adjusted the scale, it should have just adjusted the employees' pay.
I don't have a PAF. I'm not 100% sure.
Just say, I've just got, I think, I look at things as the motion is to just approve what we already did.
Well, by, and also adding the 2%, 3% colas that were given since the original study was.
And we did those, and we're, without vote, and now we want to vote to confirm those.
Correct, that's it.
It doesn't mean we're going to continue to give $2 an hour, or.
That's correct. We're just asking you to.
Whatever, in the future.
Formally approve salary ranges.
Is there a pay scale that's legally out there that shows a low range and a high range for a position?
That's it.
And if I could add, so, from here on out, I mean, annually, we'll look at this and look at what's put out to make sure we're still within.
Technically, that pay, that pay range sheet that the town maintains, every year we give a 3% cola, that should have automatically been adjusted, so then if anyone did a public records request and said, "Hey, how much do you guys pay your police chief?" Christie is a town clerk, can send out the paperwork saying, "This is what we pay." If someone would have done that last year or today, the pay, the pay scale that we have on there is incorrect. So, we'd be giving out false information. So, we're trying to bring this thing up to what it is, where it is now, what it's supposed to say, to get that document, the pay ranges documented properly for our government records. That's my understanding.
Okay, what are the wishes of the council? Further discussion? Before I do that, I have a couple of requests to speak on this agenda item. First, Matt Patterson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To some of your points, there has been tracked a ongoing, I have it, I can happily share it with you. Keith kept track of all the raises that were put on there. I have a copy of it. Happily likely, share it with you guys tonight. Furthermore, the last pay plan that was actually approved by the town was 2015. So, the pay plan that you're looking at in front of you, one, again, was never finished. I tried for over a year and a half. I have an email chain, I can happily give you that, too. We never finished the public works, job descriptions, we hounded them, we hounded them, we hounded them, and we never got it done. I just can't understand how we can create a salary study based on facts that we never finished. And I have those emails, I'd happily share with you. What I'd like to say to this tonight is, in 2017, by Resolution 171428, we removed the approval of council to prove the pay scale, and we put that all on the director. Section 201 covers that, and Section 106 covers that. The personnel director at the time was the town manager. He had the authority to set the salary range, create positions, and input from the directors was required. That's our employee policy, as of right now. All of these actions were carried out in accordance with the manual, approved through the proper forms, and signed previously, the previous personnel directors. Nowhere in the employee manual does it state that such action requires town council. I don't disagree with you going forward. If you want to change it, you want to do that, that's great. But we were following the policy. And so it's really hard for me to sit here and go, "We should cut back, or we should change this, or we should change that," when we did exactly what you guys asked us to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Church.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Town Manager. My name is Ryan Church. I am the Fleet Supervisor for Pinetop Lakeside Public Works, and one of the few employees lucky enough to live in our town limits. I'm here to disagree with the recommendation for council to authorize the town manager to adjust employee wages. I also disagree with the recommendation that employees at the top of their respective wage range become ineligible for raises other than cost of living adjustment. After reviewing the 2025-2026 salary plan proposed in Agenda D8, I found only two fleet positions listed, equipment mechanic and maintenance mechanic. The highest listed salary for the Fleet Department is from a comprehensive study completed in February 2022 of $59,616. I currently make $79,144. In 2025, the average heavy equipment mechanic salary in Arizona is $62,000 to $80,000 a year, according to Indeed. My pay is justified not only by my extensive professional experience and degree in automotive technology, but also my various job duties that go beyond the title "equipment mechanic." In the Fleet Department, myself and Clay Reedhead are in charge of maintaining and repairing a fleet of 199 units, including semis, dump trucks, service trucks, town hall vehicles, the entire police department's vehicles and equipment, heavy construction equipment, trailers, small equipment, and all the equipment needed to keep our parks as beautiful as they are. We perform repairs in the shop, as well as in the field. My duties go beyond maintenance and repair, as I am also in charge of pricing and purchasing parts, part warranties and cores, opening and closing service requests, scheduling appointments, paying our vendors, as well as being on call 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to ensure our operators and first responders are always taken care of. I don't just show up to work, I'm dedicated to my responsibilities and fellow coworkers. Agenda D9 is recommending that 25% of my annual salary be cut, one quarter of my income, $19,528 a year. Not only is this cut unreasonable and unjustifiable, it is extremely damaging to the livelihood of me, my family, as well as multiple other public works employees. I would no longer be able to afford to live in the town that I love and work for. People at Public Works earn every single cent through literal blood, sweat, and tears, and our workshops it. So, please consider me and all of the other families that will be impacted by this detrimental decision. Thank you.
Okay, Ryan. Okay, I don't have anybody else that wanted to address this on this issue tonight, I don't think. Good night, Joe. Oh, you want to address this one?
Could I?
Of course, come on up.
I'm the same guy as I once prepared. Thank you. A lot of good things have come up. I totally agree with lowering salaries for people. I don't think it should be at all, you need to save in some other manner. Hiring organizations outside of our area to do studies, I think is a waste of money. We've got a lot of intelligent people here, and we can make decisions on our own. When I was hired for Pinetop Fire Department, it was an inspector's position. Before I reported to work, there was a crisis, and they asked me if I could manage emergency medicine, too. My salary didn't change. I did that because I want to improve the community. And after that, I eventually got an ambulance for Pinetop, and we continue with that. That's an example of how people do multitask. Setting salary caps and things like that is a lot harder in smaller communities, because we do so many, it's just a test of how many multiple things that people do in their job. So, in a way, comparing Pinetop Lakeside to Springerville, we're a resort community, we really can't compare. We also can't compare the fact that the employees do so much more. Putting a salary cap on a person that you ask to more and more every day is a difficult thing. So, in conclusion, don't penalize employees for the crisis we're in right now. I think it can be better utilized by not hiring outside entities to make decisions that we probably could make on our own. That might save a lot of money. Again, you've got fantastic employees, and you guys are knowledgeable in the fact that you can make a decision on your own. We don't need outside help to say, "Oh, you should do this or that." We can do it in-house. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Mayor Irwin, can I add something? I'm sorry. I just want, in response to Matt, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, sorry, I'm trying to fix this timer. We redid, every department was asked to redo all their department descriptions or job descriptions before we did the salary study. What they did not finish, the salary study was done, what was not completed was they were going to retype all new job descriptions for us in the same format, because we did not have the same format across the town. But every single, and I don't, I don't know what, Matt, you can tell me, you guys adjusted all of your guys' job descriptions, correct?
No, they never finished creating them, and that was my argument consistently, is that how did they get a number when they never finished creating the job description?
They weren't creating them, they were going off of ours.
No, no, they were creating ours. We did not have job descriptions for a lot of our duties. Like mine, still to this day, is to oversee streets, not facilities, not grants, not contracts, not parks, not collection center, none of those are in my job description. And then we did a study based off of what our current job descriptions were.
Right, I have the documents that every employee filled out on their job description describing everything we did in our jobs, so.
But we never matched up the list. You look at this list, and we're missing a ton of, ton of employees from it.
Okay, it almost seems to me like we needed to send this back to the, some, for some further research. Councilor Heiser.
I just wanted to say, and you guys can take this how you want, I love everybody in the room, I think you're all doing a great job. But if not this cut, then what gets cut? Because the bottom line is, we don't have enough money to balance the budget. And if that means, if capping our employees puts us in a place, Joe, I don't disagree with you, and I'm in a very same, I'm in a very same place. I could leave this town right now and go make a lot more money somewhere else, but I love it right here. So, I want to stay right here, so I understand that comes with a job that doesn't pay me as much money as I could go make in another town or another state. Our police department deserves a lot more money, but we can't afford to pay them that. Our library, our library is doing great things, they deserve more money, but we can't afford to pay them that. So, this isn't, this isn't a difference between, this is hard decisions, and it doesn't mean that we hate anybody, from my perspective, it doesn't mean that we're trying to pick on anybody. We would love to pay everybody in the town a lot more money, but we only have so much money. And you. money, and you just said, "Find the money." Well, there's two options. 70% of our budget is employee wages and benefits, so we've asked Department Directors to cut and cut and cut, and they've said they've cut as much as they could cut. And then the only other thing to do then is to raise taxes. And I've heard from a number of people in this town that that is not an option that they want to see happen. So what do we do? We have to balance the budget. And Matt, to your point, maybe in, I don't remember what date you said, the Council said, "We don't need to look at the wage scale anymore," but I can tell you from looking at the PAFs over the last three years, that raises were being given out, like, I don't remember the exact number, and I'm no accountant, but when I ran this through my Excel spreadsheet, it was something like $1.5 million in salary and wages increases in the last three years. No government agency can absorb that.
I'd agree with that, but you also need to dig into this deeper, right? What are we actually gaining from this? You're taking from special funds, and you're not gaining in the fund that needs it. So we gained $30,000 for all the heartache? That's all we're gaining?
It's not about that, Matt. It's about people have to have a salary range for the job that they do.
And I agree with that. Let's create one now, based on what we have. We've worked up to this, doing it the right way. Let's create one and move on.
So I'm hearing from some Council members that this probably needs to be studied a little further. I don't, you know.
I would disagree. We have to start making some moves, or we're going to quickly be in a hole where we can't come back.
We're not disagreeing with that, but we have seven people up here with different opinions. Rick.
Just real briefly, we've got three items, and the first item is just to set some ranges. That's a pretty simple thing. Out of the three items, that's the simplest thing. It really is. We're not talking about, in this item, cutting salaries, you know, it's just setting ranges. The policies that Matt talked about created some major problems for this community, from my observation. We can't, we have to change those policies. If they were implemented, they got us into a situation that we need to get ourselves out of, and this is a way to do it, to set some parameters.
You have to start somewhere.
So, and I agree, we should have some ranges, but in our small, unique community, I would love to see, I mean, I don't care if it's Springerville or Sholo, I'd love to see their job descriptions, and actually look at the job descriptions between, and compare them to our job descriptions, and see, you know, maybe their guys do outside of the range of their job description, fine, but like, you know, if, in our small, unique, the smaller the town, the more that everybody has to wear all hats. So, I mean, you know, just talking about setting limits, great, but we don't have all of our job descriptions placed here. So, like, we're doing a partial job tonight anyways, at best. And then, and then secondly, Taber, or Council Heisler, we have a third option, and we need to raise revenue, and we need to focus on that. Like, that is a big deal. If we just stop and become complacent, there's a town about an hour north that did that, and we don't want to do that. We want to raise revenue, we want to have services, we want to have good jobs, you know? And so, we need to, I, we need to do this, but we need to get past it quick and get on with figuring out how to raise revenue. That needs to be a focus of our town, I think.
Thank you, agreed. Vice Mayor.
And I would just say, I mean, I'm fine with most of these that are on here, but obviously, we don't have some of the positions, as has been brought up. And I, it would say to me before we vote on it.
It should be complete.
It should be complete.
Job descriptions?
Well.
Positions as well, I mean.
Positions as well, there's some positions that never were put on here.
And that was a topic of another, the next item, you know, is to how, how do we address those that are not on the current survey, so.
They all kind of go together, though.
So, in my opinion, it should be a more complete salary range with every job that we have, and, you know, I know there's some that we say haven't been Council-approved, but there is a precedent for those positions set back 25, 30 years ago. And just simply because we don't have that on the organizational chart, there is a precedent for those. So I personally think we need to kind of work on this a little bit more.
I agree.
Any opinions? Mine?
I mean, I've already shared that I think that we can, we can keep pushing, we can keep kicking this can down the road, and it just makes our situation, the longer the positions exist, and employees are hired, and people get paid outside their ranges, the longer we go in, the farther we go into the hole, and the more dire the position becomes over time.
We have agreed we're not filling any vacant positions.
But that doesn't account for the positions that we currently have filled that are, that are still costing money.
But that's not on this agenda item right now. You know, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
No, I understand what you're saying, and we do need to move, and I would, I don't know, I mean, how, for the positions we don't have, is there any reason that can't be done? In two weeks, and we can do this again? In two weeks?
I think we've got to look at the positions that are not, that have never showed up on anything that we've ever had approved, and we've got to look at where those positions fit. We may have, some of those positions may fall within the categories here, they just simply be, that's their title, or they need to be adjusted. We need to look at the job descriptions, and I don't think that anybody took a job on here without knowing what the job description was. I've never worked for an organization that said, "Hey, you're getting hired," without my knowledge of knowing what my job duties were. I think that there's probably a job description out there for everybody, whether it's accurate, and people are maybe doing the other duties as assigned, which is almost every job description I've ever seen. You know, we can go back and look at those job descriptions and create some that maybe need to be tweaked a little bit, but right now, we're just trying to, you know, create some parameters here on the positions that we, that were previously looked at when you made the consultant, you know, to do the, to do the analysis.
I make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I move to approve the salary study for fiscal year 2025-2026 as presented.
Do you have a second? Do you have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, do we have further discussion? Vice Mayor?
I would, I'm okay approving this, as long as we add to it with the other positions that are not in here. Yeah, okay, that's in the next item. As I say, it's hard to split these up, in my mind, they're all the same thing, so.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Carrie Spore to three. Thank you, Rick. We'll move on to Item D9, which is Discussion and Possible Direction to Staff Regarding Compliance with Council-approved Salary Ranges. Council Frenow?
I need to recuse myself from this item.
Thank you. Let the record show that Council Frenow is recusing himself from this item. Rick.
These are all kind of related, there's no doubt. You know, with the first item, we're just trying to look at the positions that were previously presented. In this particular item, we, in Item D9, we have several people that fall outside of the salary range. How that happened, why that happened, apparently, a policy that was given or granted to administration to allow raises outside of what Council authorized. This is different than what I'm used to seeing. Raises, salaries, everything generally should be approved in a budget process by Mayor and Council, so there's no question about how raises or how salaries are established. In this particular agenda item, what we're showing here is that, upon the review of the current wages, there were a number that still fall outside of the maximum range, even when we include the 3% COLAs that were granted twice since 2022. The total impact of those individuals that are outside of the maximum range, the direct wage overage is $58,703. Town's contribution to the Arizona State Retirement System at 12.21%, cents, is $7,115. Social Security and Medicare contributions, $4,491. So you have a total identified overpayment in wages over what the maximum level was in the survey of $70,309. Recommendation this evening is, in light of the town's current financial health, staff recommends that Council authorize Town Manager to adjust the employee wages for those exceeding their designated ranges. We had a lot of conversations tonight by employees. This is, this is not a reflection of how good an employee is or bad an employee. All of our employees are excellent, they do a great job. The alternatives to this action is to take no action, continue their current practices, allowing the employees to remain above their designated salary ranges. This will result in the continued overpayment in both wages and retirement contributions. We can, we can bring the employees, look at these employees, bring them back into their proper range, and then limit any future, be topped out at that point, and any future increases for those employees would be purely dependent on a COLA, which adjusts the range. They're topped out. And in many organizations, people top out, if they're there long enough, and they depend on COLAs to get any adjustments beyond being topped out. So, Option 1, take no action, keep employees' wages intact. Option 2, move forward to authorize the interim Town Manager to adjust employees' wages for those exceeding their designated ranges. There may be an Option 3, maybe you have another idea, have a question.
Council Phillips.
Upon reviewing several of the public records requests, documents we did earlier in the year, several months ago, there were several, several town employees that one weren't even in the minimum range. Are those employees going to be adjusted up to where they're in the minimum range of their pay scale?
I'm not aware of any of those, but if there are any that are below the minimum, they should be adjusted up. If it's, if their position, description, the title of that position falls below the minimum, we should evaluate those positions. I think we should evaluate those positions that are above the maximum as well, just to see, again, what is it they're doing that perhaps justifies them being higher than what the current salary range is. Maybe we change the position title for that individual, if they're doing something that far exceeds what their position description requires. Create a new position, and have them fall within the range of that new position.
Basically, you're saying you would look at all salary ranges and adjust either way?
I don't think that's the agenda.
It's not in the, it's not in the motion, but I don't, I don't.
As part of the budget process, one of the things we looked at is where everybody was at compared to the men and max from that old wage scale, and we didn't see anybody that fell outside of the minimum in that process.
Yeah, and the budget, the agenda item is to address those that are outside, exceeding the salary. Vice Mayor.
I didn't think so.
I just don't see how we can do this right now until we have established some of those positions that maybe don't fit right now.
It does seem like these three items are a little bit, a lot related.
Yeah.
But we did just approve the salary range.
We just approved that salary range, but again, we admitted that there may be some positions that aren't even on that salary range, and as Manager Miller said, that, you know, maybe we create new positions. All I'm saying is, until we have all those positions, I don't see how we can really go forward with this. But I, again, I don't think that's something that should take a lot of time. I would hope by the next Council meeting, or certainly by October, we could accomplish that.
I would agree with you. Based on the documents I reviewed, there's a lot of positions out there, people's name, whatever they're calling the position, that weren't on this, this pay scale, and those positions need to be added to the pay scale, so we can actually determine what needs to be done. Because if you've got a position that's not even named in that pay scale, how can you say they're above their max pay range?
And that kind of got to the other item on the agenda, and they're all related, is there are positions that are not on the list. You were to direct me to go back and talk with the Department Directors about justification for those positions, whether the job descriptions are appropriate or not. We come back with a recommendation, add these additional positions to the list, and if there are new job descriptions and pay ranges, that would come back as well.
I think that would be a better course of action, because these raises that were approved, it's through no fault of our employees. And punishing our employees for, for actions that have been taken is not the right message to send. Our employees are our biggest asset. I totally understand they're our biggest expenses, Gabe, believe me, I totally understand that, but they are also our biggest asset. And I think we need to be careful how we go about this, and make sure we're doing it fairly, equitably, and really evaluating what they're doing. I mean, I've watched our town clerk over the last four months, three months, go above and beyond what's written down in her job description. And I know that there's employees across the board that are doing that. That's just one example that we've all been, we've all been watching. So I think that there's probably a lot of that in, in our structure. So I would like to direct our manager to do such things. Council Heisler.
I just would like to say, I feel like we're convoluted this issue. We're, we are not talking about not-approved positions within the town right now, because they weren't on the scale, because we had nothing to compare them to, to see if they were inside or outside their wage scale. We're talking about current employees within the town today that have a job description, that have a salary range, that are outside of their salary scale. That's what we're talking about in this particular agenda item. And I, and again, these are difficult decisions, and I hope everybody can understand that, but if, if, if we're talking about $70,309 on the top end of the pay scale, then what does that mean on the bottom end? Either way, employees are infected. That, employees are affected one way or the other, because we have to balance the budget. So if we continue to pay people at the top, then we're going to lose people at the bottom. If we continue to pay people at the top, outside of their salary range, what does that do to other employees within the town? I can tell you, I know for a fact, there's a 20-plus-year employee of this town that's not even at the top end of their salary scale yet, and how is that right, when we have employees of the town that are well above their salary range? And why did that employee not find his way above his salary range after 20-plus years of service with the town?
Not even at midpoint.
It's not equitable, and I don't know how we can continue. I agree, I don't think people should get punished, but we're not asking anybody to pay that money back. We're just saying, moving forward, they have to be adjusted to within their pay scale, and there's multiple documents that show that we're paying a reasonable wage for the job that we're asking to be, that we're asking for, and we can adjust it. I've seen organizations do that, where they adjust, "We're going to pay you for being bilingual, and we're going to pay you for this, and we're going to pay you for that," and pretty soon, you can't afford the employee anymore, because the bottom line is, there's a limited amount of money that we have to manage the budget. And this is difficult, it's not easy, but I'm sorry, for those in the room, I'm just not an emotional decision-maker. I'm, I look at it, right, wrong, black and white, that's the way I see things. And I don't know how you can have employees out of, out of, how many, 66 FTE, full-time equivalent, employees, and eight people are outside their salary range. What does that do to the morale of the other 58 people that are within their range and will never be able to make more than the top end of their range? I feel like that has to be equated, like, you're essentially picking eight people over the morale of the entire rest of the town staff, and I don't see how we can do that.
I don't think any of us are arguing about the need to save money, do something to reduce our expenses, so to, to put that on the rest of us, that's not, we're not arguing about that. We're arguing about how it's, it's going to be equitable, and I, I feel like we need to look at this more, and direct the Town Manager to, what's this, allow the current salary levels, or look at them more carefully, look at their job descriptions, and see if they're, if they're doing more than what they were originally hired for. I don't have the answers to those.
On this particular agenda item, I think maybe you just table it for now, this item, if you want, and let us look at these other positions that are not listed.
I would agree. Take no action, give us, give them a timeframe to come back with us in two weeks with a study or something.
If we table it, we have to table it to a specific date? Is September 18th? Can you get it done that quickly?
Tough to call, I mean, I could do my best to get that done in that period of time. I think, I think we could, we could look at job, the people that we're talking about here, that are not on the list, and that are being paid outside of the pay range, that are on the list. That's, those are the two things. Bring all that back, and say, "The people that are above the pay range, here's what the justification is for them being outside the pay range, if there is justification for it. If there's not, we're going to come back with a recommendation, they'd be brought back." back down into the pay range.
And I think that's kind of what we're looking for.
Yeah.
I'm speaking for.
I would, I would just make one additional comment to that. What, what are we going to do? Our employees, I could justify, I could, I could tell you all the things I do in my day job, or I can tell you all the things I do as a council member that I didn't realize I was going to have to do when I got elected. The bottom line is, that's not going to change unless we're going to bring the mechanic from the city of Sholo in, and the mechanic from Timber Mesa in, and the police chief from, from every other town, and say, tell us all the extra duties that you guys do, and, and can you justify additional money in your, in your salary for doing that? I think every employee on the planet could do that. I, I just don't see how it makes the decision any less easy or hard at the end of the day.
Gabe.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say, is, these are never easy decisions. Unfortunately, like I've said in the past to some of you, this isn't the first time we've been involved in an organization in this situation. Unfortunately, decisions were made that got us to where we're at today. And it's not the employees' fault, it, it's, it's not. But unfortunately, when you're looking at an organization that is structured such as ours, we have little ability to go out there and make more widgets tomorrow. So, while I agree, bringing in more revenue is an answer, and, and it definitely needs to be looked at, we are not going to affect change to our financial situation by bringing in more revenue tomorrow, unless the council wants to raise taxes. And my, from everything I've heard, that is not the direction that this council wants to go. We can justify how we're going to fit people in to where they're at today, and where they should be versus where they shouldn't be. Ultimately, you guys are the stewards of the taxpayer funds. The parameter should have been set way back when on how much somebody could make in their position. Unfortunately, those parameters were not there. Now, you need to evaluate, how are we going to, as an organization, right-size the wrongs of our past? We've put one-time money into wages, we've hired people based on additional revenues coming in due to a change in circumstances, due to, due to a global pandemic, and now we're faced with the fact that people aren't coming up to Pine Top like they did during COVID. ARPA money that comes into Pine Top isn't coming into Pine Top anymore, because that's over with. These are hard decisions that have to be made. I don't envy anyone that's sitting up there making these decisions, but ultimately, this town has to make a decision. Two years ago, when fund balances started dropping, if we wanted to have these conversations and take our time, and do studies, and find out where everybody should be, by all means, let's take our time and do that. We didn't do anything back then. We're now at this point where we are running out of time to make decisions, and so decisions need to start happening. That's my piece on this. It's coming from a financial analysis position, it's not coming from the people position. I understand, these are people, and I'm not saying that this is easy, but ultimately, I'm sure every single one of us in the room can justify that we deserve what we're getting paid. Unfortunately, we live by rules where we have to set a limit, and we have to set parameters, and then we have to live by those limits and parameters, whatever they may be.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. I move that we table this item until September 18th, and ask the town manager to further evaluate these positions, to ensure that their job description is actually what is being expected of them, and come back with a more firm recommendation.
I second that.
Thank you. If there's a motion, is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Okay, that carries forward to, so Rick?
I understand.
Get to it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on then to item D10, which is discussion and possible direction to staff regarding positions established outside of the 2022 salary study and not previously approved by council. Rick?
I think this kind of goes along with the discussion we had in the last item, that we'll, I'll evaluate these positions, look at the job descriptions, come back with some recommendation to council on whether we should include these on the list of positions that the city council officially approves in moving forward in future bunch of discussions.
Okay.
We don't need to take action right now.
We do need to direct you to do that.
They do need to direct you to do that, so they need to take action.
Pardon?
They can take action directing you to do that, which is what the motion is.
That's fine.
Yeah. Is there any council discussion on this or questions?
I'd say this would be for in two weeks as well. Can't we revisit this then?
We can put that in the motion, that, by September 18th. We do have one individual who would like to speak on this, would you still like to speak? Daniel Rawlings.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Daniel Rawlings, and I currently serve as Operations Manager for the town Pine Top Lakeside. This position was previously known as Public Works Manager. The change was not a creation of a new role, but rather a title adjustment to align with terminology commonly used at other municipalities around the state. I began my service with the town as a street supervisor. Over time, through my leadership and knowledge of our operation, I earned the trust and respect of the Public Works team. Recognizing this, the Public Works Director, in collaboration with the Personnel Director, determined that I would be a strong fit for the Operations Manager role. This position was formally posted. I applied, along with another candidate, and following the thorough interview process, I was selected. My salary was then discussed and set by the Personnel Director. The council decision, D10, notes that my position, along with others, may not formally been approved by council. However, Section 106 and 107 of the Employee Handbook clearly state that the Personnel Director is responsible for administering the town's personnel system, including drafting and maintaining job descriptions for all positions. Nowhere in these sections does it require council approval for such position personnel decisions. I know there was a need for this position, and I believe that I have effectively filled this position, and will continue to do so. Regarding the financial analysis in the CDR D10, Point 1 states that the Town Manager determines whether positions remain on the organizational roster. At the time, the Personnel Director, with input from his directors and staff, found the Operations Manager position necessary. Since then, I have continued to make Public Works more efficient and responsive. Members of the community have personally expressed their appreciation for my service, and I believe thorough review would confirm the value of my role. Point 2 refers to market-based salary ranges. Section 201A of the Employee Handbook assigns responsibilities for pay rates and ranges to the Personnel Director, with authority to consider the comparable positions in both public and private sectors. My salary was set with this in mind, considering my extensive private sector background managing million-dollar projects, large crews, equipment, fleets, and day-to-day operations of businesses. While CDR D10 suggests that salaries were not approved by council, the Employee Handbook establishes that such approvals are not the responsibility, such approvals are the responsibility of the Personnel Director. Furthermore, all salaries, including mine, were incorporated into the town's overall budget, a budget which was approved by the Town Council. In summary, both my position and my salary were established properly, under the authority granted to the Personnel Director, consistent with Employee Handbook and Town Code 2.08.070, and within the budget approved by this council, or respectfully submit that my role as Operations Manager is both necessary and justified. Time and consideration.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Come on up, Mina.
Counsel, Vice Mayor, Mayor. My name is Mina Henning. I am a resident of Pine Top Lakeside. I was born here, and I've watched a lot of, I've watched some good happen, I've watched a lot of bad happen. I came tonight to get the proclamation and stuff, unaware that it, that this is what's going on, and I think it's a really, as a resident of Pine Top Lakeside, I think it's a really sad day that the council and them are considering what they're doing to some of the employees here that have worked really hard. And I, for one, know that it is very expensive to live in Pine Top Lakeside. It is a great town, but this is also a community of NIMBYs, not in my backyard. And through the years, I've watched the Town Council and stuff like that pay a lot of outside surveys, stuff like that, and whenever we look at it, we're just like, oh my God, more money, more money. This didn't happen overnight, but you're talking like it happened overnight, and the only thing that you guys can do is cut employees, which I think, as a resident of Pine Top Lakeside, is a very sad day as resident, that the council is even thinking about it. And like the gentleman over here said, as you can see, I'm a little shaky, because I'm a little upset about this. This started happening two years ago, so where was that, you know, effort that you're going, oh, I'm not emotional, I'm black and white, where was that two years ago? But, all of a sudden, you have it right now, whenever you have employees on the line. And I just want to let you know, as a resident of Pine Top Lakeside, longtime resident, that I think this is bad business, I don't think it's good, it's, I've heard the rumors through the community and stuff, but after listening to it now, that I think you guys really need to look at some other alternatives and not make these employees pay for mistakes that were made, that the council has let happen. So, thank you for this time, but.
Thank you, Mina. Come up, Abby. Come on up.
Can't get the Mina brochure, I apologize, I. Thank you for letting us speak. I am very emotional as well. I, when you're in a position as an employee, I can't go and tell my boss how much I'm going to make, he needs to approve what I'm making. And my boss, if they're good, and they're a good director, they're going to point out what I've done. And these all have been approved, and I'm emotional. $70,000 in our budget to save and to lose, potentially lose some really good employees is a very sad state of affairs. I know how much it costs to retrain employees, to hire good employees, to find good employees who are going to be on call 24 hours a day and not get on-call pay, to be there to snow remove, do snow removal, to fix your roads, to do whatever else is needed to be done. They are valuable, and all this conversation that's going on now, we could potentially lose these employees that may, that are being considered. And sir, out of, with all due respect, I've never met you, you're an interim town manager, but I hear a lot, I've been on this mountain a lot, I've been involved in our community on school boards, united way, the Humane Society, involved in medical, and a big company here, and I've supported a lot of CEOs, and where I sat, I saw a lot of things that were unjust. And that can be, I'm not making accusations, but when employees are told to do a whole lot more and not get paid, and then the CEO, or possibly managers, getting paid a lot more, that's not right. And as an interim town manager, sir, I don't hear anything good of anything that's happening. I am emotional, I am concerned about this town, I believe, I don't believe in outsourcing things, you get what you pay for. And where I sat previously, we outsourced payroll, we outsourced our 401K plan and all that. I went back in, and I had to fix those things. It didn't save money. And I would request that you respectfully look at these people, these positions, and all that is done in this town, for people that have been here for many, many years, that go and volunteer, respectfully look at it, and be a member of this community, and think about what you're doing. Please, council members, look at who we have that are filling in as interim or whatever. We, you get what you pay for, and I don't see any good things coming about. So, I appreciate that you consider that, and forgive me for being emotional, but we've got some valuable, awesome assets here that work their butts off doing everything and anything, and.
Thank you, Abby. Come on up. Jennifer.
Hi, everyone, my name is Jennifer Monro. My main name is Jennifer Schmidt. I was born at Napropatia Hospital, I tend to Blue Ridge. What you all are facing is an extremely challenging position. My previous experience before, I started working in a nonprofit down over at St. Anthony's Catholic Schools, working for a company that a lot of us know, Milwaukee Power Tool. And as the Director of Sales with over 150 people on my team, living in LA in Orange County, during COVID, we brought on over 1,000 event marketing specialists into Home Depots to go and take advantage of the DIY market that was taking place. And I think we all know that across the United States, everybody really ups their, their personnel, and as things started to change throughout time, I was faced with the exact same challenging position that you all are at, in terms of, what do we now do? We're either sitting really heavy on our employees, how do we manage our payroll, and all these different things? And it's a really challenging decision when you're looking at such great stories that you brought up earlier. And eight out of 66 individuals could be sitting a little heavy, I think maybe scaling back on, on salaries on those eight, just for a time period, and really looking at either, how can we right-size that for the time being? Because at the end of the day, if we don't right-size eight people and keep all 66 on board, it challenges all 66 individuals' employment, meaning that a lot of people, a lot of people actually end up losing their jobs, and you have to unfortunately let go a lot of people versus keeping everybody and leveling out some pay, even if that just means for a time period. I, I agree in the fact that bringing in third-party outside services to be doing surveys and different types of things like that maybe can be put on hold. I do feel that JVP group is actually a really big asset to us, I think we're saving a lot of money on the financial component, but it's a, it's a unfortunate situation that I think we're all in, and we have to look at what's best for, for the whole group and keeps everybody versus losing a lot of people in everything. I know I, you know, sacrificed a lot of my bonuses, I didn't get promotions that I was, I was deserved, and all these different things, in order to be able to maintain the staffing personnel, and thankfully, my team in Southern California, I was reluctant enough to be able to replace the people into different positions. When open positions came up, we slotted those EMSs into those roles, so there's a lot of different solutions out there, and I would just look at, what is our actual timeline before we have to, like, as the dollar amount starts to go up in terms of debt, what are our decision-making things? But we, I think we need a little bit more meat to chew on before we get there, but the 18th, I agree, is, that is a drop-dead date. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Come on up.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor, and Counsel, my name is Natalie Church, and I have lived here for all but two years of my life. I just think that you should consider, you might not keep all these employees if you do that cut, and when you have a smaller budget for their salaries, you need to consider if you're going to get the same quality employees being hired again. And then also the training, all the CDL classes, things like that, you're going to have to pay for all over again, and possibly with people who don't work as hard, who aren't on call, who you get what you pay for, you're going to be paying them less. And so, I just think that you should all consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Okay, is that it? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I just wanted to address some of the things, and, listen, I don't skirt any responsibility as a council member. I will tell you that myself and several other council members up here questioned what we were doing and why we were doing it for the last several years, and there are people in this room right now who can testify to that fact, because we were in the meeting, we were asking what we were doing, and we were asking, is our budget okay? Can we afford to do these things? And we were told, yes, we were. And it wasn't until this year, at this year's budget meeting, that we were told that we were $1.7 million short on our budget, that we had to find. It was this year that that happened, and it was a surprise. And so, I'm not here for anybody in this room to skirt any responsibility, but I will say this, what I've heard today is all the things we shouldn't do. What I haven't heard from anybody is what we should do. How do we do that? How do we keep all the employees with the pay where they're currently at? How do we pay all of our employees what we think they should be paid? Because if you're asking me, I think everybody in the town is not getting paid enough money. If you ask me as a private citizen. the town is not getting paid enough money. If you ask me as a private citizen, I don't think I get paid enough money. I would love to make more. But what I'm asking you guys, and frankly, my cell phone number is listed on the town's website. I would love to have conversations with you. What are the alternatives? Ma'am, you, you mentioned you're, you're a resident here in the town of Pine Top Lakeside. What, I would love to hear what you think the alternative is to balancing our budget. Because I don't know how else to do it. I sincerely, we've, we've asked directors, we've asked town staff, we've asked, we've asked everybody to cut as much as they can. Because I can tell you, the number one thing that I heard unanimously from this council in budget work sessions where we didn't want to cut employees. That's not what we wanted to do. We didn't want to cut pay. But you only have so much money. And so what I'm asking from everybody here is, what then? What? What do we do?
Can you come up here, Frank?
At the beginning of all this, you talked about taking everybody a 5% pay cut. Where did that go? We talked about that. You came to the shop and said that.
I did.
Now, where did that go? Now you want to cut my, my wages? I've been here 17 and a half years. Do you guys understand how many hours I put here? I get paid for 80. A lot of my check, a lot of times I put, you know, 100 hours. Where did that go? I tell my guys, it's community service. So when I do retire and something happens. But you want to cut my pay? And you want to cut these guys' pay? That's bull crap. Take a 5% pay cut. Look at that. Do you bring in a guy outside? Last time I went through all this with an intern, we did it in-house. We had three people that did it in-house. That's saving us money there. But you guys decided, no, we need to bring somebody in. That's over $100,000 per pay right there. We're throwing it away. Come on, guys. It's not that hard. Math is easy. 5% pay cut across the board. Let him go. Let Matt, put Christie, and get the people police involved. Let them run it until we get a manager. We did this before. I've been through a lot of this. I think this is becoming a lot of horse crap. That's what I'm saying. I'll take a 5% pay cut to help my fellow employees. But you want to cut my pay? You want to cut them? These guys show up 12:30 at night to go plow snow. We're not asking for anything different. We're not asking to, to be praised. We come here and we do a job. We love our town. I love this town. I left a golf course to come to this town for $17.50 an hour when I first started. The town couldn't even afford chalk for the kids to play softball or baseball. I paid out of my own pocket. Mike Mehdi did the same thing. I got two and a half years. You're screwing with my retirement. My retirement. I'm not asking for anything else. I will do $100 every two weeks for the town. But when you guys start doing this, this is crazy. This is ridiculous. I'm sorry, I'm emotional, but this is just flat-out asinine.
Thank you, Frank.
Do you have a comment?
Go ahead, Council.
I, I am thankful for everybody being passionate about our community. This is where we live and like, we see all these common faces. This is the team that's going to make it happen. I do think, I've said it before, that our little town, we serve, we serve double or triple the population, so we're trying to act like a bigger town. We have expenses that a lot of towns don't have. If we need to go away with those and act like a town of our size, we need to do that. If that means we pull back some other services that we haven't looked at the budget yet for, you know, that's, that's also a prudent way to use the taxpayer money. If the people outside of the town limits don't want to be annexed, well, there's a cost to that. And so I think, I think that there are other ways that we, we haven't addressed yet. We're running short on time, but that we could find the money to balance the budget without, without doing drastic things, without hurting people's retirements. I mean, I, I think that that needs to be looked at one more time, acting like a town of our size. Does that mean putting off dog parks, bike trails? Yes, like little tiny podunk towns don't have that stuff, you know? And so we, that's what, that's how we need to respond, I, I believe, until we are bigger.
Thank you, Councilman Fournelle. Okay. Thank you, guys, for all your passion. I think we're all committed to figuring this out together. Maybe we need to go back and look at the 5% pay cut. I resisted that. Go ahead.
Here, I don't want to leave this on a real down note. We've done a lot in the last few months to save. I think Gabe would admit that we've made a lot of decisions that I think are going to help and are helping us come out of the hole that we've been in a little bit. You've said it before, we're not broke. We're not. But we have to be very careful because we're heading down a path that we can't afford, to your point. I live in the community. I, I have a home here. I'm invested in this town. I love the town too. I came here in an interim capacity to try to help resolve some very complicated, difficult problems. I have never said anything ill towards any employees. I think we've got great employees. It's not about employees and about their talent and how long they've been here. There are, there are towns and cities that have had to make these very tough decisions in the past, that have had to let people go, that have had to put people on furloughs for a period of time until they kind of catch up. Their, this is not uncommon. And we're facing kind of a similar situation right now. But we've done a lot of good things. You know, we're putting up hiring freezes out there right now, so we're not hiring people into positions that we have to be obligated to pay for. We reduced, reduce some workforce here and there, bring on Gabe and, and, and him as a contract employee versus hiring a full-time finance-directed service, save us about $70,000 a year. There's a lot of savings going on that you don't see or recognize out there. This is, this is not about our very talented, very capable employees. We, we, I care as much for you as anybody. I try to communicate that to your directors in our weekly meetings. But we've got to kind of work this out. And we can. And there's going to be some tough decisions, but we've got to make these. And I'm, I'm all, my, my door and my phone is, I'm available for anybody to come in and offer suggestions. I am. I've been out there working with some of our employees in different areas. I know what they're going through. I know what they do. So that's all I have to say, there.
Thank you, Rick. Joe? We're starting to recognize you.
You gonna throw it at me?
I was just going to say that.
Joe, you need to go over there by the microphone, please. Sorry.
I heard that the town wasn't going to buy water bottles for anybody. That was a great idea to save money. You guys all have water bottles? Because I'll buy some for you if you need it. Idiotic decision to cut water bottles, especially for people that are paving roads. That's it.
Mayor, I've got to respond to that.
Thank you, Joe.
I do. I need to respond like that. No one cut water from any employee. What was done, the department that was buying water through a contract, through a company that has no business here, paying a membership fee to buy water, bringing it in, bringing in lunches and things like that. We can't afford to do those things. Go buy water here locally at places you can buy water, at the local places, Safeway. I bet there are many, many ways you can do this. No one was told not to get water for employees. No one was.
I disagree with that, but that is something very important. When you identify a problem, you want to come up with a solution. That's a great management thing. Always have a solution to the problem. And that's an example. Now, you have a solution to the problem, so thank you.
Buy, yeah, buy locally. Let's help support our existing businesses. Those are, that's, that's my objective here is to, to try to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. We're going to get back to our agenda item. So, any other council discussion? Vice Mayor, motion?
Well, I would move that we put this off till the 18th as well, right?
So, no, we have a motion in here and just put the date in there, if you wouldn't mind, please.
I, I move to direct interim town manager Miller to conduct a comprehensive review of the identified positions not included in the 2022 salary study, including job duties and recommends salary ranges and return to council with findings and recommendations on which positions should be retained on the town's approved organizational roster by the 18th of September.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion to second further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Council for no.
Could we look at again the common across-the-board payroll adjustments so that, I mean, we, we did talk about that.
I think we could, but that's not really the agenda item.
Comprehensive review of positions, but, so, and.
We could put that on our September 18th agenda, if you would like to.
I'd love to, yeah.
But that's not.
Okay.
But thank you. Okay. We have a motion to second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, everybody, for your passion here. Okay, we're going to move on to item D11, discussion and possible direction to staff regarding the town manager recruitment process, including the job advertisement, job description, posting dates, posting sites, and overall timeline. So we have in our packet tonight, sorry, I have to get to that page. So we feel that it's in the best interest of everybody in town to go ahead and advertise and get a permanent town manager. We have a job description currently in our, in our employee manual. There's one change I'd like to see made to that, and that is removing the word administrator when it says manager/administrator. Counselor Heisler very generously wrote an advertisement for us to solicit for this position. I appreciate that. Christie, you've got some options for us as far as posting this. Would you go over those for us?
Oh, yeah. Let me get to that item. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We have no money in the budget for an official, like, recruiting process, an outsider, which is fine. I think we've got, we can, we can move forward with the plan. If we post this on Monday, and we've got staff members that can create something, you know, this is a great place for people to come, you know, to Counselor For No, if you'd like bicycling, if you like the outdoors, hunting, fishing, anything. Those are the kind of people that might be more interested in coming to our community. So I believe Annie DeRosa can create something. There are other communities around the state that are currently recruiting for management positions. So Christie suggested our, of course, our town website, the independent online version, the league, Indeed, and LinkedIn, and were there others?
Yeah, there's a company, is it called government.gov? Governmentjobs.gov that has a lot of postings on it too. The reason why I didn't put print in the White Mountain Independent is the, the cost. And it, I don't believe that a lot of people read print anymore, but the web, the town, the website at White Mountain Independent is far more affordable and reaches more people.
Okay. Thank you, Christie, for researching those for us. We've got three different timelines. I would prefer to go with a 30-day timeline with the option to extend it a little bit further. I don't know what the rest of the council's thoughts are on that. I, I think after talking to other council members, managers, elected officials at the league training, the league conference a couple of weeks ago, that they are, we probably will have a number of applicants. You know, maybe we've got some internal applicants. I don't know. So that's my, my thought process on that. Council members, please weigh in on that. I have, my suggestion is that we have a committee screen these applications. And that committee will be community members, business leaders. And, and once we've screened that, and, and these are, this is all dependent too on the number of applicants we get. Then we can reduce it to three to five applicants. Hopefully, we get that many. And then maybe have department directors review those applications and then come to the council as a whole. And maybe even have a meet and greet with the community and look at those. We've done a lot of those types of things in the past. So that's my idea on this process. I'm open to suggestions, comments. Counselor Heiser?
I just wanted to touch real quick. I, I didn't write an advertisement. I wrote a town manager job description. I submitted that in when, when it was requested from council. And I, I just wanted to, I don't know if anybody's reviewed it, but I was very intentional in some of the language that I put into the revised town manager job description as opposed to the current town manager job description, for example, like a focus on economic development. Because as we discussed, we need to find ways to bring more revenue into this town so we can support our operation. And so as far as the other things we discussed, I think 30, 30 days is a great timeline. But I, I guess before, I don't know if everybody had a chance to review this, but I was very intentional in the language I wrote into the town manager job description, not an advertisement, so that the future town manager can be held accountable to things like economic development initiatives, which are not in the current town manager job description, which are, is not a focus of where we're at today. And so I just wanted to throw that out there for everybody. I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet.
You don't have to be quiet. But when I read it and says, why join us, how to apply, to me, that's an advertisement. That's why I called it an advertisement. So, open for suggestions, comments?
I like what Counselor Heiser's done here. Heiser's done here. And I, I mean, one thing is, it actually lowered the amount of time required in a position, experience-wise. And I think that's probably good for here. But I mean, I, I like what he's done here. And I'm fine with the 30 days as well. And that's good.
Vice Mayor, can you speak into your speaker? It's really hard to hear you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I like the one that Taber Heisler did here, and I would recommend that one. And I, I'm fine with the 30 days. We just need to do it.
I agree.
Also, I'd like to, I, I was doing some research in there. I know there's a, an association out there of town managers and stuff. It might be good to advertise with them because there might be other town managers out there looking for move to the mountains or something.
Any other comments, discussion on this?
I think 30 days is good with, with the option to extend, like, if, if we need to.
So then I move to direct staff to advertise this position with a 30-day deadline. We'll look at the calendar. Christie, if we put it out on Monday?
Yeah, let me, let me grab it.
I'm sorry, I've got a calendar. I apologize for getting my phone out. 8th, 1, 2, 3.
Do we want to say 30 days not to exceed 45 or something, or just so we don't, aren't rigid there? Because, I mean, what if people aren't getting their applications in till just right at the end and we miss a couple of people? Unless we're flooded. I mean, we could close it at 30 days.
You can extend it.
You can extend it, but you can also, you want to give yourself just a, a little bit of time for review. So I, I built like just a, a very basic timeline that other cities and towns use. And it gives a review time and then also time to follow up on references and stuff like that, schooling and all that. Yeah.
Is the committee going to be in charge of checking the references?
I would think so.
No, the committee or the HR would be Stacy.
Yeah. I think Stacy would do that. The committee's going to evaluate them and, and put forth recommendations. So I move to direct staff to accomplish this. Post it on Monday, September the 8th, with a 30-day, which would be Wednesday, October the 8th.
Yes.
Okay.
Are you asking staff to use the job description that was the original? The one that Council Heiser prepared? Okay. Just to make that clear.
Any further?
I second your motion.
Thank you. Been moved to second it to direct staff to move this item along. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify raising your hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Christie. Appreciate that. Okay. Item D12. A34, upon a public majority vote of members constituting a quorum, a public body may hold an executive session for the following purposes. Three is discussion or consultation for legal advice with the attorney or attorneys of the public body. And four, discussion or consultation with the attorneys of the public body in order to consider its position and instruct its attorney regarding the public body's position regarding contracts that are the subject of negotiation, impending or contemplated litigation, or in settlement discussion conducted in order to avoid or resolve litigation. The item we are going to discuss is information discussion regarding employee appreciation bonuses given in FY '22, '23, and '24. The town will reconvene in open meeting to possibly take legal action on this item. Do I have a motion to enter executives?
I move that we go on executive session.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved to second it. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Mina, I have your...